I'd like to bring this month's meeting of the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to order. First, the adoption of the agenda.
Twenty-eight oh five twenty-seventh and twenty-five nineteen Blair are removed from the consent agenda, so those will be placed at the end of the agenda. And nine thirty-four McFerrin and four twenty-two Broadway are deferred at the request of the applicants.
Okay. Any other changes? Also, I'd like to recognize, are there any council members that are here that would like to speak now as opposed to later? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
No.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So, we're starting the consent agenda. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under ten minutes. Of course, this happens later, but we might as well get this out the way. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal, so that's eight minutes in the beginning and two minutes at the end. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they're representing an organization or group, and then they may have five minutes. So, appeals to decisions from the Historic Zoning Commission pursuant to the provision of section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedure requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. As said, the consent agenda is happening. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be removed from the consent agenda.
Thanks. This meeting's consent agenda includes seventeen oh seven Forest Avenue, new construction addition and a setback determination; one oh nine Linsley Park Drive, new construction addition. Two-ten Leonard Avenue, new construction addition and partial demolition; thirty-six twenty-four Central Avenue, new construction addition and outbuilding; and two fifteen Carden Avenue, new construction addition and setback determination. Staff has reviewed these applications and recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions to staff about any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, open public hearing. Any items on the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
All right. The first case is two thousand eight Natchez Trace. It's, as you said, it's been, it was deferred from the December commission meeting. It is an application for new construction of infill. The lot is currently vacant. Shown here is a rubble pile where the, a non-contributing building stood previously. What's proposed is a building that's partly one-story or partly one-and-a-half-story, partly two-story. And as you can see on the site plan, the setback proposed is much deeper than the majority of the block. Standard typical setbacks for the block are forty feet. What's proposed is sixty-seven. The reason for that is that there is a depression in the front yard that essentially acts as a drainage, stormwater runoff from the hill up to the southeast. And this was confirmed with a report from a civil engineer that recommended a drainage ditch be constructed in the front yard, which, of course, meant that the building could not be in a typical setback and had to be pushed further back where it's been proposed. So, back to the existing, or to the proposed site plan, the building will be forty-one feet wide. About, it's on the edge of being compatible with the range of historic houses, but the deep setback should essentially counteract any, any perception of the building's scale being larger. It also has a two-car garage that is attached. Attached garages are not typical of the historic context, but that was viewed to be a result of the building's front setback being pushed back so far, essentially precluding the garage, which isn't an appropriate location for a garage, precluding that from being detached. The building, as I said, is sort of one-and-a-half, two-story Tudor revival-style brick house, thirty-three feet tall, forty-one feet wide. That's the front elevation and the side elevations. You can see the right elevation is two stories, whereas the left, which is on the top there, is one-and-a-half stories. There are mainly one-and-a-half-story historic buildings in the context, but three, four houses away on the next block, but three, three or four houses away, there is a two-story building on Natchez Trace. And then just around the corner on Benton Avenue, I believe it is, maybe it's Fairfax, which there are other, more two-story buildings. So, staff felt that the scale of this is compatible with the proposed, sorry, with the historic context. The proposed materials are mainly brick with siding and some half-timbering on the garage portion. Those materials are compatible with surrounding contexts, and staff found them to be appropriate. The window proportion, they're vertically oriented and regularly spaced windows. Staff found those also to be compatible with houses in the, historic houses in the surrounding context. That's a view of, of the rear. The garage elevation obviously is on the rear, on the bottom, showing the rear. And then the, the top image there is a section of the back of the house without the garage. And staff recommends approval of the proposal for new construction in the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay with the following conditions: that the finished floor height shall be consistent with nearby historic buildings, be verified by staff; that the exterior materials, including brick samples, roof color, as well as window and door selections; and the material of the paved walkway in the front yard shall be approved administratively; and that HVAC units shall be located on the rear facade or on the side beyond the midpoint of the house. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that this proposal will meet the guidelines for the conservation zoning overlay.
Any questions for staff?
Sean, on the rear elevation H-five, it's just kind of walking me through that. My take on the backside with no consistent windows is that since it's on the rear side, there's not that prominent.
Correct. We would require a, a window pattern consistent with surrounding historic houses on a public facade. We consider those to be, or the guidelines considers those to be the front and the side elevations. And this is not a corner lot, so the, the rear elevation here would not be considered public facade. So, windows, that proportion of windows or the rhythm of windows was not looked at like it would be for a, a front elevation.
Okay. Thank you.
And forgive me if you did say this in the presentation and I missed it, but the little on eight-seven, that fiber cement looks like it was a door, maybe. I mean, it's, maybe it wasn't a door, but it's kind of the proportions of something. Could you explain that? Forgive me if you already said it.
The bottom of those two images on the screen, there is a, no, I'm sorry, I see what you, the fiber cement siding, the little panel within the, the brick wall there, that is a ventless fireplace projecting chimney, or without a chimney, just a fireplace. If there were a true chimney, we would require that to be masonry. But a fiber, a ventless that doesn't have a roof projection, we kind of look at it like a bay. It doesn't have any windows, but we, we treat it similarly and find cement, fiber siding to be appropriate there.
Is that just flashing over that, or is that a little gutter, or what is that?
I believe that's a little section of roof. It's faint there, but you can see it on the right side of the front elevation. It's just a little angled section of roof.
Any more questions for staff? Okay.
That, like the chimney, the fact that there's an attached garage, some of those are, you know, given, given the deep setback, they would be less visible than it would on, on a house that were closer to the street.
So, just a little bit more, so it'd be past the midpoint of the house, so?
Yes.
That, that's the logic on that as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I believe the applicant is here.
Okay.
If you have any questions for, for him.
All right. If the applicant would like to come forward and state your name and address.
This is, my name is Adam Epstein, thirty-seven oh four Hobbs Road in Nashville. Just want to thank the staff for working with us. We simplified a lot of issues on this thing to clean it up. I've talked to a lot of neighbors in the neighborhood. They're pretty excited about a new construction going on that site. Just want to ask, is there's any questions?
Any questions?
Seeing none. That's, that's all I have, I hope for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I like this design. I think the design really fits much more the historic context of the neighborhood. I, I think it's greatly improved, and I move for approval based on staff recommendations.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay. So, four twenty-two Broadway is deferred. We're next to six twenty-two Shelby Avenue. I will give, Councilman Allen, if you, would you like to speak now, or would you rather speak with the?
I'm coming. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Six twenty-two Shelby Avenue.
So, six twenty-two Shelby Avenue is a circa nineteen-twenty brick bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. In December twenty-seventeen, the Historic Zoning Commission staff learned that the owner had purchased and installed a pre-made residential outbuilding structure on the lot without a preservation permit. The structure is currently one hundred and sixty square feet. The applicant may add a cover deck, increasing the footprint to two hundred and thirty-four square feet. The Historic Zoning Commission must review and approve all outbuildings larger than one hundred square feet. So, again, this is one hundred and sixty square feet, where, what, less than one hundred, we would not have to review. The approximate location of the outbuilding is outlined in the aerial photo. You can kind of see that little red, red and white square. The outbuilding meets all base zoning setbacks. It's eight feet from the west side property line, twenty-four feet from the east side property line, and eighteen feet from the rear property line. Here are some photos of the outbuilding. It is approximately twelve feet tall with an eave height of about eight feet, well below the maximum for outbuildings and dadu's. The structure's height, scale, location, and setbacks all meet the design guidelines and the dadu ordinance. However, its materials do not. The windows in the outbuilding do not meet MHCC standards for windows. The windows are vinyl, and MHCC does not typically approve vinyl windows. In addition, the windows have grills between the glasses, between the panes of glass. And MHCC typically requires that windows with a grid pattern have fully simulated divided lights. MHCC recommends that the windows be replaced with windows that meet the MHCC standards. The cladding material is T-one-eleven siding, which MHCC does not approve. In the past, MHCC has required applicants in similar situations to install battens over the scoring that is intended to make the T-one-eleven material look more like vertical board. Staff recommends that the applicant be required to install battens over the scoring in this case. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the structure, which will likely be used as a detached accessory dwelling unit with the following conditions: one, that the windows will be, be replaced with windows that meet MHCC standards; two, that battens be installed over the scoring of the cladding; and three, that the applicant provide drawings showing the design of the new cover deck if he wants to move forward with that aspect of the design. The paper and the online recommendation listed that we would want to receive a restrictive covenant for the dadu, but we have received that, so that is no longer a condition of approval. So, with these conditions, staff finds that the, the outbuilding or dadu meets the dadu ordinance and section two, three B-two-H of the Edgefield Design Guidelines. The applicant is here, if you, I think you'd like to speak to you as well.
Any questions for staff? Anything about the foundation?
It doesn't really have a foundation, per se. I mean, typically for outbuildings, there is a, like a slab or a concrete block foundation. This seems to be on kind of, not on a permanent foundation. If it wasn't on a permanent foundation, if it was smaller in size, less than one hundred square feet, again, we wouldn't regulate it. Staff didn't have an issue with the lack of a foundation in this case, but it could be something you address.
No, no, for lack of a better word, covering or nothing for it, nothing, okay.
I mean, the applicant, no, there was, not when I was out there, no, there isn't anything covering.
Or did by staff at all. Okay. Just a question.
And then the commission could add that in if you wanted to, but we.
All right. Any more questions? Okay. Thanks. If the applicant would like to come forward and state your case and your name and address.
These photos are kind of all in here.
Yeah. Just like the left and right, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Joshua Goldman. I'm the owner of sixty-two Shelby Avenue. Good to meet you all. So, I purchased this, it's a, a structure, I guess detached accessory unit, back in November seventeenth. Right away, I mean, I came into Metro Codes to apply for the restrictive covenant based on everything I thought I would need to basically be able to use that, whether it was either myself or, at the time, my sister possibly coming down and living in there. I already have an Airbnb single room in my house, so I can't use that for that. That was not the intention. But I went in to get that permit because I thought that's what I needed to do in the first place. And then when I was there, I asked a few people, and I found out that I needed a permit to even get it delivered to the property. So, like, from that, I mean, from that point forward, I've been working with Melissa, who's been very helpful, and Fred Zom, just basically pushing forward to do what I need to do, to get everything done along these lines. I guess basically, I learned that my property is on the very edge of the historic district. I, right behind my house, and there's an alley, and then there's the Section Eight housing right there between, between the Sixth and Shelby. There's, there's homes along Shelby, then there's an alley behind there, and that goes into Section Eight housing, which, let me see if I can show you the alleyway. So, this is basically the, I guess, the very edge of the historic district, and this is what I look out at the back of my house. And along those, I guess, the property along that line there, I'm not sure the name of the alleyway, but I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that is the very edge of everything. So, basically, compared to, I guess, what I'm looking at with certain neighboring properties, which I've taken some photos of, and with my property being fenced in and things along those lines, I, I did not see this being an issue, but I wanted to make sure that we went forward with everything. And I kind of wanted to explain, I guess, with going through the ordinance seventeen sixteen oh three oh G, and then just going over the zoning overlay, why I think that this should be permitted as is versus having to add the windows and the, the battens. I mean, along, reading along through the ordinance, it does, it's under the two hundred square feet requirement. It's ten by sixteen. There is a neighboring property that here, it's hard to tell, but in the picture on the right, here, he does have, already have a, a unit there. It's probably a little smaller than mine, but I know the purpose of a lot of these, what I feel the purposes of these ordinances is visually to be, to remain consistent with the neighborhood. And I feel that my unit does do that, and I'll show you, I'll go back to what it looks Also, there's no, the ordinance says no more than one detached accessory dwelling should be permitted. That's not going to, this is the only unit that I'll have there. It's in the rear. It says that it has to be, one of them needs to be under occupied if I'm not in a front house. My plan is to set up a deck in the kind of area back there to be back there. For some reason, I don't want to, because I ran out the room, and if I want privacy, I mean, it's a nice, the way it's set up inside, and I was already refurbished, it's a very comfortable place to be. And it is on a, I guess, they're talking about on the lots with alley access, so there's not going to be any issues with curb cuts or anything like that. It's just going to be alley access right through this back gate here, which actually oftentimes is blocked by people that are living behind me. But then I'm going to go through, just quickly, read the one section of the zoning overlay where it says, which I'm sure you're familiar with, "But historically, outbuildings were either very utilitarian in character, or they repeated the roof forms and architectural details of the houses to which they related." And it also says, "Generally, either approach is appropriate for new outbuildings." So, to me, it's saying either the utilitarian or the other approach is accepted. And they suggest that the other approach, where they want it to look more like the homes, is more accepted when they're more extravagant homes, or they specifically point out at the end where it's a corner lot. Corner lots should have similar architectural characteristics, including to roof form. I, this structure, my house, is not a corner lot. Just real briefly to finish up, a few things. From reading through the overlay, a lot of focus is on visibility. It talks about outbuildings, windows, and doors. It says publicly visible windows should be appropriate to the style of the house. This is what the public sees, and that's basically, they can't see anything through my fence. There's no public visible, publicly visible windows. One window is facing my house, the other window is facing the neighboring fence, and the side window is facing my gate, which remains closed at all times. And then it does talk about the siding and trim, or it could be brick, weatherboard, and/or board and batten. This here, I mean, it's a, if you can, I'll get closer. It is weatherboard here, and I understand, I guess, the requirement or the desire to have the battens is to make it look like it's a vertical flow. If, from my opinion, looking at this, it does seem to have the vertical flow, where it's going to accomplish the same goal as having these battens. And if I'm looking at the two here, this one that they had added the battens, or this one, again, I'm definitely partial because it's mine, but if, I mean, this feels like it's more appealing to the eye. And just, I mean, I guess the thing I'll focus on to the end, this is the, the back of my house, and here's the front of my house. There, nobody on Shelby has any way of seeing to the back, this is like my backyard, there's a fence in between, and then there's bamboo. There's no visibility at all of this structure. And I just feel that if I were to be required to add the extra expense of these new windows and battens, I don't think it necessarily serves the purpose of what this, the historic overlay was created for. I understand if there were, if there was a visibility or if there was an eyesore, but this, the only people that this is going to be visible to is me. And I just, I would appreciate allowing this to stand as is. I did make sure when I was going through everything that I kept the setback properly and did everything I thought I was supposed to do. And then once I learned that I didn't initially, I've just made sure to be in contact with your office to make sure that I'm compliant as much as I could be.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Kind of what I asked staff, do you have any intention, any, to do anything at the foundation? Just where it's sitting up on blocks, where you think of doing anything there, or go back, go back a couple? To the front, I guess, to the front of it.
So, one on the side is not on my property. That's, that's where I picked it up from. The, that's a photo from when I first bought it.
Okay. So, it's different now?
Yeah. This is more accurate, a photo of where it is now. So, it's still on cinder blocks, but it's a little less high than the, because the other cinder blocks were standing vertical. These are only about this high off the ground. And my plan, I wanted to see what happened here was, was to have, and I know Melissa had suggested it might be a benefit to add a deck. I do have the material to do that, but I didn't want to do anything until I got any more permission from you. And I mean, there would be a deck, so it would look more appealing.
And you will have a step, I mean, this is not a historical thing, but a step into it?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, nobody else has questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing none, closed public hearing.
Just starters. On, and I, I think Commissioner has, or Chairman has, has brought in a point about the foundation that I'm a little interested in. So, looking at the dadu requirements, there isn't a requirement that outlines foundation to be concrete or established, or, nor does the design guidelines. And do you all follow that as well? Just to be sure where, where headed with that.
And though the design guidelines don't touch on it, it may be something that the applicant has to get approval from when they go through codes or before they get their final use and occupancy permit. That may be something that they check. But I, I think your charge here would be, if you feel that the foundation is an issue as far as the historical character of the house and whether it fits into the, to the design guidelines, then you address it. But it, that may be something that comes up with another metro department.
And I think where I'm leading into that as well is that our reviews in the past have been, you know, this is so, this is an unusual case since I've been on the board, that most of the dadu's would be, because it's a detached accessory dwelling, that it would be more permanently on the ground or securely to the ground. So, I think that's where it's, it's new, a new project.
I could maybe add to that a little bit. It is, I don't think you've seen one on piers before. They're usually on concrete slabs. But historically, you did have outbuildings and even principal buildings on piers. In other words, just a column of stone or brick. So, we didn't really have issue with that as much as the other materials, and we just wanted to be sure that everyone's been treated the same. So, everyone else has been required to have those kinds of materials in terms of the siding and windows. And so, we just, that was our biggest concern, is that everyone's treated the same.
I have a really concern that there comes up that these are sort of prefab buildings that don't quite fit into the neighborhood. And it sets a precedent that we, we're going to have to live with, and it continues to happen. I understand the visibility, but the, the fence is something that could come down if the next owner has, so happens to purchase the, the property. So, I mean, I think we need to make, the, the dadu's have been, come a long, long way. We've had some, some sort of stretching the, the guidelines, but I think we really need to make sure that, that we're not going too far in, in allowing too many of these structures to creep up in the back of, seeing this is a beautiful home. So, I'm concerned that if we don't go ahead and, and make this one, have this one comply with what we have set as, as the precedent before, that we're sort of on shaky grounds continuing to almost, almost diminish the, the dadu guidelines that we've established. And we've worked hard to get there, so.
And I think, I think the owners worked.
And I think, I think the owners, work hard, and we appreciate you working with the staff on this. The, the standards for DADUs are treated separately in the design guidelines than the ones for the outbuildings. Outbuildings can be more utilitarian, but a DADU, when you look at the design guidelines for that, it says, the design standards, the detached accessory dwelling shall be of similar style, design and material color as used for the principal structure, and shall use similar architectural characteristics, including roof form and pitch, to the existing principal structure. So I think already, we've made a number of accommodations in that the Dutch barn, you know, it's not architecturally at all like the principal structure. So I think that the addition of the battens, the, the improvement of the windows to something more compatible with what's in the neighborhood are reasonable expectations.
I'll speak toward, did one, one issue, and I'll, can echo the staff's comments. It's, this is a, an odd mixture of things, where you've got something of an impermanent structure that just happens to exceed more than 100 square feet. We have to, a line was drawn somewhere, we didn't draw it, it just was in the guidelines, and so then therefore you have to apply the guidelines. And the battens and the windows are, are kind of part of, come along with that, that an relatively impermanent or small utilitarian structure would then be used for a DADU. Again, muddy, sort of muddies the water further. But I think by adding a permanent foundation, which the guidelines don't require, would almost make it look more permanent. And I think, as is with the piers, that one certainly for me is not a requirement that would, would need to bring it to the ground in some way. And it is certainly historically accurate that it was utilitarian, so, and I'll echo Cyril's comments about outbuilding to DADU. It's a unique situation, for sure.
And I do think the other thing I wanted to say, too, is the addition of the battens is not to give it a more of a vertical look, but it's to make it look more like a traditional board and batten structure, which would have been materials used at the time the neighborhood was built, versus sheets of manufactured plywood, so.
To make it not look like 2111, which is specifically addressed in the guidelines.
Yeah, I agree, I guess it's just, I mean, I guess trying to make that very temporary looking not look quite that much, but if, if the commission is okay with being on the blocks, I mean, certainly won't, but it seems, seems like just something we would normally not accept, you know, or the roof structure for that matter. So I, in my thing, you know, at the very minimum, what the, what the staff has already suggested, recommended is, you know, at least that. Anyway, any more discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation for 622 Shelby Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Motion carries. And I think our next one's 15, nope, it's 11, 119 Third Avenue South. Yeah, jumped ahead.
119 Third Avenue South is the home of the Johnny Cash and the Patsy Cline museums. In December 2017, the commission voted to disapprove the multiple signs installed without permission on the Third Avenue South in the rear facades of this building. The commission requested that the applicant return to the commission at the February 2018 public hearing, with a plan for bringing the signage on both facades into compliance with the design guidelines. The applicant has submitted information for bringing the signage size allotment into compliance for the Third Avenue facade, but not for the rear facade. Also, in November 2017, MHCC public meeting, the commission voted to disapprove a roll-down security door on the Third Avenue South facade. The owners were given until January 30th, 2018, to remove the security door. As of about an hour, maybe 45 minutes ago, when I drove by, it has not yet been removed, and it is still there. So I'm first gonna go through the signage plan for the Third Avenue South facade. On this facade, the painted 119 sign is an address sign that is not reviewed, so that's, I don't know if you can see it, it's in the middle there. The cafe sign behind the storefront glass is, is behind the storefront glass, anything that's behind the glass is not something that MHCC reviews either. So those two signs on the building will not be part of the overall consideration for the signage plan. So for the, there are two signs that are currently there that, that the applicant is planning to retain. The first is the Johnny Cash projecting sign, which MHCC staff did approve, I think in 2015. And then the painted sign on the small kind of sliver of the side facade will also remain. And staff finds that these two signs do meet the design guidelines and are appropriate to remain. The applicant is proposing to remove the two, I guess somewhat temporary signage, signage signs. One is the Patsy Cline bracket sign, and then the other is the Patsy Cline wall sign. Those are both final, and their material and size do not meet the design guidelines, so staff is supportive of removing those signs. The applicant is proposing to a second projecting sign for the Patsy Cline museum. The projecting sign meets the design guidelines for size and location. However, its illumination is not appropriate. The sign has exposed bulbs, which is explicitly not permitted in the design guidelines. In addition, the bulbs are proposed to be on a one-second flasher. The design guidelines allow for blinking or flashing lights only on Broadway, and that's the street, not the district, so only on Broadway, the street, are blinking or flashing lights allowed. They are not allowed on the side streets within the Broadway Historic Preservation Overlay. So because of the illumination, staff finds that the proposed new sign does not meet the design guidelines. Can you advance the slide, it's, I don't know what's happening. Did I turn this off? The applicant proposes to paint over the painted sign at the top of the building in black paint. Although the commission would not typically permit the painting of brick in this location, staff finds that removing the existing sign by painting it with black paint is appropriate in this instance, because this part of the building was painted black prior to the establishment of the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The applicant proposes to install an illuminated wall sign to replace the painted letters. Although the sign references the building's address rather than the building's establishments, staff finds that the MHCC must still review it, and that its square footage would count towards the overall allotment. It is not located where typical address numbers would be, and in addition, there's already a painted address number near the entryway, which is gonna remain, and that, the painted number sign will be counted towards the overall allotment, but the large 119 at the top should be. The proposed wall sign is two feet tall and seven feet two and five eighths inches wide, or approximately 14 square feet. The numbers will be illuminated with a reverse channel letters to give a halo glow. Design guidelines do state that a wall sign shall be located lower than the window sills of the top floor for multi-story buildings. In this case, the wall sign is above the window sills of the top floor. Staff finds that the location to be appropriate in this instance because there was signage in this location prior to the establishment of the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, and because the signage references the building address, not its establishment. Staff finds that the proposed wall sign meets the design guidelines. So here's a summary of the Third Avenue South signage allotment. Long story short, when you add it all up, it is less than the 158 square feet that is allotted for this facade, so staff finds that the proposed plans for the Third Avenue facade do meet the design guidelines, except that the illumination for the projecting sign does not meet the design guidelines, and then there's also an issue with the signage on the rear facade. So for this facade on the rear, the design guidelines allow for 79 square feet of signage. The images of Johnny Cash, the photographs are painted, I'm not sure if their photographs are paints, they're painted, but those images are considered to be murals, and are not counted towards the overall signage allotment. But the Johnny Cash Museum letter sign is part of the allotment, and it is about 75 square feet, so if you count that, there's only four, four square feet remaining for signage on this facade. The applicant did not provide information about the size of the Patsy Cline wall sign that's circled in red, but it's clearly more than four square feet, and its material seems to be kind of a vinyl or plastic, which does not meet the design guidelines. So it's, does not meet, that signage does not meet the design guidelines, and because of the overall issues with the signage, the fact that the rear facade is still greatly over the allotment, and the applicant has not indicated any inclination to bring the signage on the rear into compliance, staff finds that the proposed signage plan for 119 Third Avenue South does not meet the design guidelines. So, oh, I should have, that was just the summary of what is allotted on the rear facade. So they're allotted 79 square feet, their sign is, the legal sign is taking up about 75 square feet, the rating, square footage allotted for this facade is four square feet, so that Patsy Cline sign does not meet the allotment. So in conclusion, staff is wrecking disapproval of the proposed signage, finding that the new projecting signs illumination and the building's overall signage square footage do not meet Section 4 of the design guidelines. Staff recommends that the applicant return to the commission at its March 21st, 2018 public hearing, with a proposal to bring the signage on the rear of the structure into compliance with the design guidelines. Staff further recommends that the applicant immediately remove the security door on the Third Avenue South facade, as previously required by MHCC. And that was probably a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer questions, and the applicant is here.
And you received public comment from Councilman O'Connell stating that the 119 is inappropriate signage.
Questions for staff?
Melissa, just a general question about painting over historical brick. Is there any kind of guidelines for a particular material?
Typically, I mean, typically we don't allow painting of brick. We do allow painted murals, usually on secondary facades, or you can see here it's on the rear, so we have allowed it in that case. I didn't include it, but we have a photograph from 2009, prior to, that shows kind of prior to the overlay, that there was painted signage in this location, so they changed the content of the painted area, but not the, the paint itself. I think typically, we'd probably would rather see something that's more of a reddish to kind of blend in, but in this case, since it's been painted black for a while, we were okay with the paint, not the black. Or ideally, removed altogether with some sort of non-hars, yeah, appropriate.
But do you recommend any type of a material paint, you know, like elastomeric, is it? So that it's protective to that brick, that historic brick? That wasn't?
That might be a little bit beyond my materials expertise, and so, yes, we would work with them and want to know what they are using, and I don't have a specific paint that we would choose.
Typically, we want to see a water-based stain, so that the original, as much of the original texture can show through as possible, and water-based, so that it isn't causing any moisture issues. This has already been, this will be painted three or four times at this point, so I don't know that it matters too much.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for staff?
Yeah, I've, I've got a question, please. There's, you know, a lot of talk around these signs on Broadway in the historic areas, and I know we're in the process of maybe changing them, and, but what is the purpose of illuminated signs on Broadway and not around the corner?
It's not that they can't be illuminated, they can. They can be illuminated anywhere. But we were trying to keep the flashing, chasing, spinning only on Broadway, to keep Broadway unique. Okay. So they can have illuminated signage, the issue is the flashing, chasing, and then of course bare bulbs aren't currently allowed.
If this, I know we've been talking about allowing bare, bare bulbs, though, at, at some point. Is that correct? We were thinking?
I have no idea when that's gonna come back.
Okay.
I have no idea what your decision might be.
Okay, but we, there's talk about it.
There's talk.
And if this sign was on Broadway, would you allow the flashing lights as currently proposed?
I can answer that, actually, they, I think we would allow them, right now, they're on like a one, they're proposed to be on a one-second interval, and I think the design guidelines say they need to be on like a two to three, or a three-second interval, so we would allow the chasing or the flashing lights, but it would need to be timed differently than what they proposed.
Okay, thank you.
But they, we still don't allow bare bulbs on Broadway, either.
But we have talked that bare bulbs have been historically approved in the past.
We've talked about it, but the guidelines have not been changed, and they very specifically say no bare bulbs. And at this point, I don't know if and when that's gonna come back to you. So it may never happen. It might happen, might not happen, it might come to you, and you disapp, you know, there's, we can't recommend making a decision based on something that may or may not happen.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay. Thanks, Melissa, we may need you, but thanks for now. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case, and please state your name and address?
Mr. Chairman and Commission, my name is Kelly Frey, I'm an attorney with Nelson Mullins, Raleigh and Scarborough, located here in Nashville, 154th Avenue North. This matter comes from a deferral of the December 2017 meeting, where the commission requested that the owner provide a comprehensive redesign of the current signage, which the staff reviewed as noncompliant. There are actually several different issues, and I'd like to separate them so that we don't get the confused. The first is the roll-up door issue, we separated that in December, that remains to be an issue. We're not contesting that today. So to the extent that the roll-up door is not in compliance with the requirements, we're not contesting that, we'll get that remedy. With respect to the other aspects of the total signage plan, we're going to respectfully request that the commission approve the Patsy Cline sign as presented to the commission. We're also going to request that you approve the painted signage as it is now, the Johnny Cash Museum at the top, and I'll go into the reasons for that. In this regard, it's our understanding that the Councilman for this district did remit an email to the commission today. However, I would respectfully disagree with the staff member that he said that he was going to disapprove that. He indicated his concern about our proposal with respect to the 119 signage, saying that he preferred the signage as it exists now, the Johnny Cash Museum, as being more consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and consistent with the use that the, the current business owners need. I just wanted to confirm that as a point of history, the owner submitted a plan on February 2nd to the staff, and I'm before the commission today, upon the staff's continued disapproval of the signage, and, and really in an attempt to work with the commission and the staff to resolve this issue once and for all. As previously presented to the commission, the 119 building was initially used as a low utilization salvage store. The point of signage at the top of the building that currently contains the words the Johnny Cash Museum, historically and for decades, included the term salvage store, the salvage store. And so it's an historical use of that appropriate signage at the top of that building. That particular building underwent significant renovation, invested millions of dollars in that renovation to improve the condition and rehab the building into its current more constructive use. This particular use is as a museum, which has since obtained international acclaim, and currently employs over 50 people. So what we're looking at is a situation where we would like to conserve the historic nature of that signage, and keep the Johnny Cash Museum signed up as it is right now, which I think the Councilman would agree with. It's being consistent with the neighborhood. We submitted an alternative plan, but the total signage plan was not approved by the commission, and that's what we're talking about. The staff recommended that we have some changes, so what we're wanting to do is do a total signage plan, so that the commission can approve that, and we can dispense with the issues on this. In that regard, we're also looking at the potential of the staff considering, and the commission considering, that the rehab signage should be grandfathered in because it's historical significant. Regardless, the owner presented an alternative plan for the total signage, it was refused by the staff, so we're interested in coming into conformity. We've already indicated we're gonna remove the shingle sign, the vinyl sign on the front and on the back, that's all part of a consistent plan. The problem is, we can't do without signage. This is a retail establishment. It gets thousands of visitors every year, and so to take down all the signage without another plan in place is just not practical. And we're putting at risk jobs in the Nashville community. So what we want to do, again, is work with the commission. We would like to maintain the signage as it is across the top of the building. We'd like to replace the vinyl signage with the projection sign. And by the way, the, the signage that was submitted with respect to the Patsy Cline signage is exactly the same as the Johnny Cash Museum, so it's gonna be on the opposite end of the building, and it's gonna be reflective of the style that was already approved by the commission. So again, in trying to bring this building into conformity, we can see on the roll-up door, that's not an issue. On the signage, however, we're trying to get to a point where we have a visually appealing retail destination for travelers to a family-friendly location. retail destination for travelers to a family-friendly location that's a destination site now in our city. And in that regard, we're requesting that the commission, in the discretion of its authority, allow us to maintain that Johnny Cash Museum sign up at the top and have the two projecting signs, which I think is going to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the needs of the specific business. We've got a couple of people here to speak in conjunction with this. Again, I'm going to ask that the commission approve the Patsy Cline sign as being consistent with the Johnny Cash sign. It's a mirror image of that sign. Grandfather in the signage, as you see at the top, just being reflective of what the historical signage has been there all along, and we just changed the name of the business. Separate out the door issue, we'll take care of that. And allow us to work with the staff on any remaining issues. In that regard, I would like to cede the rest of my time to Brian Taylor, who also has some comments with respect to our request.
Thanks, Mr. Fry. Mr. Tibbs, thank you. Thank you to the commission today. The one thing I'd like to bring to your attention that you're not seeing is what this building looked like prior to the Johnny Cash Museum taking up residence. The entire top, to Mr. Frey's standpoint, the entire top band, as we refer to it, that's, that currently states the Johnny Cash Museum prior, prior, said, the Southeastern Salvage, I believe, was the name. It was painted, black background, light green. The sign had been there for a few decades. To Ms. Mayhall's point earlier, asking about lights on Broadway versus otherwise, I'll, I recall a comment Mr. Mosley said earlier, a line was drawn at some point in the past. Well, in my opinion, and I think ours, and, and most folks who are on the lower Broad area, in the lower Broad historic overlay, it's time to redraw the line. Broadway is not just Broadway anymore. It's an overlay district, and you see more and more activity going down the side streets. Third Avenue is probably the best example where five to six years ago, you didn't have retail activity on Third Avenue. But, back to Mr. Frey's point, again, what you're not seeing is what the building looked like before. The, the, the purpose of this commission is to preserve character, preserve the structures. And when you've got folks that are coming into this area, not on Broadway, but they're still paying exorbitant amounts of money for these buildings, and then investing additional exorbitant amounts of money in these buildings, signage is important. And in this case, if the owner, and the 119 black band across the top was, 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 was simply done to, to make a point, that if that's suitable, or the fact that, that is suitable aesthetically is just not pleasing. It makes the building, bad is not maybe the correct term, but I'm going to use it. It makes the building look bad. It takes away from what the owner, a longtime lifelong friend of Johnny Cash, it takes away from what he's trying to do in this building. Again, he's agreed, as Mr. Frey has stated, he's, the client or the owner has agreed to take, take down, remove any vinyl sign on the front and the back. And what we would ask as a result of this conversation today is that, let's keep the roll-up door as an issue, and we realize that. We're working with that, we're working with the owner on that, and, and we want to continue to address that matter because, I mean, we agree it's an issue. Now, the owner's standpoint is, that's there, so vagrants don't sleep nor defecate in that small enclave on Third Avenue. So, I would ask the commission to separate that matter entirely. Let's keep that as a matter of the record, and let's continue to discuss that. Let us fix that. But for the matter in front of you, from a signage standpoint, I would ask you to, if nothing else, to term grandfather what was done across the top of the building, just because it replaced what was there. No owner is going to go into a building like this and spend the millions of dollars that have been spent and keep Southeastern Salvage across the front, across the top of a building that's now dedicated to Johnny Cash and now Patsy Cline's lifetime legacy, a lifelong What other point I would make in the, in the few seconds I have remaining, there's a, there's a modification for exceptional design in your guidelines. To that point, I would say, this is pretty exceptional considering what was there before, when you had a, an old retail salvage store that existed in a historic district, that now the only real thing about, that's historic about it are the age of the buildings and the fact that it's in an overlay. It's the most profitable and generates the most taxes of any location in our city, if not our state. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for the applicant? None? Okay?
I've got one.
Okay.
Was, was the reason of taking that Johnny Cash sign off the top down was so that you could put the Patsy Cline sign up and still be within the guidelines, having both the Johnny Cash sign and the, the Patsy Cline sign? Is it, was that the reason why you blocked out that top part?
We were trying our best to come into conformity with the regulations, but in this instance, the regs just don't do justice to this particular business in this location. So, we submitted it, the councilman doesn't like that option, we don't like that option. It's in conformity with the regs, but realistically, it's not a good solution.
I will just provide some information on the Johnny Cash Museum sign. It wasn't part of what they proposed in their submission for February, so I didn't analyze it in the, in the staff report, because it wasn't part of their presentation. But, the commission did consider it at the December meeting, so it was discussed in that staff recommendation. And at that time, the commission moved to disapprove the request to keep that sign and the other signages, and required that the applicant bring the signage regulation into compliance with the design guidelines. That sign does not meet the design guidelines in its square footage. Let me just pull up the size. The size of it is about 316 square feet. The signage allotment for the entire facade is 158 square feet, so it's well beyond the signage allotment for, for that facade. So, that's, so the commission has, did consider it in December, and, yeah, so it, it just, it doesn't meet the, the compliance. And I didn't include that information about the size of the signage in the staff report or in my presentation, because that wasn't really what was part of the submission for February.
So, so is, is the staff recommending they take out that top sign?
Uh, yeah, yes. Well, actually, we weren't recommending it. I think it was part of the approval from December.
That we voted to.
I mean, if you look at the minutes, it was part of your decision in December that, that it'd be removed.
Thank you. No other questions? Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please state your name and address.
Well, no, I always got something to say. My name's Kayla Jocelyn from Jocelyn Sun Sign Company, 630 Murfreesboro Pike. First, on the incandescent bulbs on the Patsy Cline sign that's proposed. They have been disapproved. I've been before this commission many times, as have a lot of folks here, and I keep hearing, and I heard it earlier, we don't want to set a precedent, we don't want to set a precedent. Well, the Johnny Cash sign that's, that's pictured, it's on the far right, the projecting sign, it has incandescent bulbs and they flash, and that was all approved, I don't know if it was staff level, I don't know if it was you guys, but if it was approved, it's up, it's been running for years. So, I think that's kind of hard to, to not set a precedent, because that was approved. This is the same building, same use, same occupancy, same everything. I mean, it's truly a replica mirrored sign. And another thing, Elizabeth, I wanted to thank you for your open-mindedness. I could not agree more. The current rule on Broadway does allow for the three-second flasher, and correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, but the new proposed regulations say that allow for one-second flasher. The incandescent lighting is also written in the new guidelines, so that's fine. Jocelyn Sign, we actually provided a really nice example of some incandescent lightings and LEDs. So, I know that that's come before you guys, and it was always my understanding, and I've talked to it with, with, I know with Robin, and I'm sure with a few of you guys at some point, that there was no problem. And I've actually stood face to face, and Robin and I were talking, it was right down here at Metro Codes, and she and I both agreed that that was about the only friggin' thing that nobody was complaining about with the new guidelines. So, I don't really think it's fair, or find it anywhere fair, or understandably whatsoever, that she said that made, it may never get approved, or that she doesn't know when it's going to be approved. It was my understanding that was going to be going on the May agenda, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. But, this is a unique situation, there's no doubt. We've come before you before, asking for increased square footage. This is not, this is literally just replacing what was there, and if, you know, I don't think it's fair to say that all the painted portion is a sign unless we make it the 119. Councilman O'Connell has been involved, they've had several meetings and had a few discussions, and I know he emailed you this afternoon. Sorry, I know my time's up. You have any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay?
I will add one little thing, if I could. The Cash sign does have bare bulbs. It was issued by error. So, once, you know, it went up, we didn't feel like we could make them take it down because it was our error, but we don't think that that's a reason to continue to allow it when the guidelines specifically don't allow for it. I don't know that the guidelines will come back in May. I, I don't know. We thought they were going to come back to you this month, and it's been delayed again. So, I have no idea when it'll come back to you, what it will say, or what you will approve.
Okay, closed public hearing.
You want to comment? Close public hearing.
I can't, if you want to come and state your name and address. Oh, you were the applicant, I'm sorry.
I was on behalf of the applicant earlier, I get, like Brian Taylor.
Sorry, I didn't.
I, I would like to restate what Mr. Frey said, that the councilman prefers what we're asking today versus what we proposed as purely the example of 119.
All right, thank you. All right, closed public hearing. Discussion?
I think one of the things that we do have is, is in our packet, we do have a, a photograph of the salvage store sign that said Peace Goods and had the entire painted band. I, I will say, that was very visible and very easy to find. You know, I went there numerous times when it was a salvage store. However, there were no projecting signs on that building. It was just all painted on the building itself. So, so there was a, a difference, and now to go to that plus a painted sign is, is a lot. You know, we run into this, I think, with almost every project on Broadway, in that everybody's saying, there's just not enough signage here. We need more square footage, we need more flashing, we need more light. And I think anybody would drive up and down Broadway and Third Avenue would say, gosh, you know, you know, I, I haven't heard any tourists say, there's just not enough signage down here, you know? And so, I can understand a lot of what they're saying, and I personally agree that the black painted sign is not as good as, as, as what was there before. However, given the restrictions and the guidelines that we do have, and given that we don't want to just open it up to unlimited signage down there, then I would say that, that one solution they might consider would be to go back to painting it the color of the brick, so that it winds up not being objectionable black band at the top. I, I do think that we have to hold the line with the signage regulations, and if in May, or whenever they come back up, then we'll have new guidelines to go by. But, but, so, I, I'm not in favor of just allowing everything that's been requested today.
Can, maybe, does anybody remember the one a couple months ago, the Duluth? What was that, Second Avenue? Can, can, do you remember that one, Robin? Or can you?
I don't know.
Like the, so, I'm, I'm trying to think of what the painted sign, so they're saying, you know, so, I guess my understanding, and I do, you know, I agree with the, the councilman and the applicant solely on the fact that, that what's currently there, at least letters is, looks better than just the 119. But then I come back to, well, why is, why are we still allowing just the whole black band there in the first place, to make it to where it looks terrible with just 119, in my opinion? So, then we, and then I, then I thought about the Duluth, and they wanted that grandfathered in, or, you know, I was trying to remember, and then it was, but then what it was?
They wanted to, they wanted to put, there was a nice sign that says Nashville, and they wanted to take that off and put two signs up, Duluth Trading Company Apparel for everybody. And so, that's what they wanted.
Yeah, and they're all individual, different cases, and individual cases, but I was just...
They're very different cases, because a lot has happened here over the years without permits. And so, years and years ago, back when I first started, the director, in trying to assist, said, okay, the sign you added at the top isn't, doesn't meet the guidelines at that time, but rather than make you chemically remove the paint, or make you paint it to match the brick, you can just paint it out black, and that'll be easier. So, we were trying to continue that help. It's just been a moving target as more things happen, and one thing gets corrected and another thing happens, so it's complicated. We're just trying to get it to a point where it's the same as what you have done for everybody else.
I will have to say, just looking at this building, is that with the Johnny Cash Museum, Johnny Cash sign, the Patsy Cline sign, it just looks like that building's just one big sign. And so, I would feel more comfortable if, if they kept it as is with the signs they're going to take down, or they, like you said, paint that red up on top and then add their Patsy Cline on the side. Then it won't look like the building's just one big sign, which is what it looks like to me now.
Well, one of the things I think that Commissioner Stewart suggested is that they could go, excuse me, they could go back with the Johnny Cash Museum painted at the top, if it were, say, painted red brick. They would just have to reduce the size of that, the, the sign itself. I think by about half, is that right? You said it was 300 and something?
Well, it's 364, and the allotment for the entire building is 158, minus the Johnny Cash, which is 40, minus the proposed Patsy Cline projecting sign, which is 40, so it would have to be reduced significantly. I mean, they could do some sort of painted signage there.
But, there could be, and there could be some signage at the top.
And that's a new request that we just learned about, as you learned about it? So, we don't have those exact calculations?
Sure, sure. But, I'm just, I mean, to go along with that, to get away from the black strip, so. And a lot of work has gone into developing and, and trying to maintain these sign regulations, I mean, over the years. I mean, it's been a long, arduous task, but, and I think we've done a fairly good job of sticking to those regulations. They can change, but we can't, we can't, as a commission, draw the line. I mean, it, it has to change the regulations.
Someone else? Yeah, you better go there.
Okay. I was asking, what about the, if there are any regulations for signage inside of the window? Obviously, that cafe sign is, is large, and everyone can see that, so could that be a consideration for the Patsy Cline sign, and just putting it inside?
They can put anything they want inside the windows, but what we were responding to is what was given to us.
So, what we're talking about right now is just the Third Avenue facade. We're not even addressing the back side yet.
We are trying to, because there's a violation there that hasn't been corrected.
But, we're not talking about that, right, yet.
It, it is in the staff report.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, but I'm talking about...
Just to confirm, the applicant has a great hearing, very bad as far as the total signage.
So, could you get up and...
Well, I think he said that they had agreed to take that one off. Did, I don't know, yeah, I don't want to open up public hearing. We're on a roll. Did you have something, Ben?
Yeah, I, I do. I think the charge in December was to come back with a, with something that met the guidelines, that, that was a total signage plan, and to parse this out isn't doing that. I think if you take the Pinnacle Building, which is not historic, but if, if we apply this logic to the Pinnacle Building, and there's a law firm that's really important, and they take up three floors of that multi-story building, and they need a sign, and then you've got somebody on the other side that needs a sign, and then I need more signs because I've got more businesses here, that's not the way it works. And so, this is, all these red herring arguments don't, none of them hold water. The signage guidelines are what they are today, and this application, I guess with the 119, even though the councilman doesn't like it, I'm not sure that has anything to do with it. Either it meets the guidelines for the size, or it doesn't. And to try to solve a problem for the applicant that is in many ways self-imposed, I, I don't feel an obligation to do that, whether it's signs inside the window or anything else. I could entertain an argument that a painted sign across the top of the building has some historical significance. Similar arguments have been made, not necessarily with signage, but are you willing to forego the Johnny Cash blade sign that you already have up? I would say the answer to that, I don't want to speak for the applicant, is probably no. And now you have another museum of some significance, and I'm not arguing that Johnny Cash and Patsy Cline aren't... I could entertain an argument that a painted sign across the top of the building has some historical significance. Similar arguments have been made, not necessarily with signage, but are you willing to forego the Johnny Cash blade sign that you already have up? I would say the answer to that, and I don’t want to speak for the applicant, is probably no. And now you have another museum of some significance, and I’m not arguing that Johnny Cash and Patsy Cline aren’t significant, and that this is not a going concern, but the signage just doesn’t meet the guidelines. It’s not that unique, it just simply doesn’t. And all these other things don’t really matter.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a prior action that was taken on this, and decisions that were made. We had the application that was made for this meeting, and then we had the presentation that was made here by the applicant, all three of which are different in nature. I don’t think that we’re in a position to be able to make a ruling today on this issue.
Well, we have a, we do have the case that was presented, Melissa presented it, and we had the, which was original, and then the staff recommendation. So although we did get some extra information, I mean, and I don’t know, you two may want to chit in if you disagree, but I do feel like we can just decide on what we’ve listened to today, and based on the recommendation today. But if you, do you agree with that? Okay, no. So I do think we can make a recommendation based on that. But I don’t know if there’s about to be a motion, but I, just for the record, I do kind of fit more with what Searl’s recommendation, I mean, comment was, I guess was better, that, you know, if anything, basically how it was when it was southeastern salvage and no projecting signs, would, you know, even keeping it was more, you know, anyway, I felt, kind of echoed more your commentary, I feel like that would be more in line with what it was, and not having the projecting signs, but anyway, just, I wanted to go on record for that. Is there any more discussion, or did you have something, Caitlin?
I mean, I guess now I’m just, you know, I agree with everything, you know, Commissioners Stewart and Mosley have said, and I guess I just, you know, I’m hesitant, you know, I just, if that 119 sign with the black is in compliance, and that gets approved via our action today, whether I think the owner or not will try to come up with a new solution, because, I mean, that they stated in record, that was just to kind of prove what they could do with the regulation, even though it’s not appealing, but it does fit. So I guess, you know, I don’t, I don’t know what might come of that from our action today. So, I mean, it’s not, you know, it’s not, I’m not the owner of the building, so I can’t say, but that’s just the one thing that’s on my mind about, about it today.
Let me just, my comments to say that actually the application that was presented, that the staff evaluated, does appear, if you, and I agree that 119 is not an advertisement for a business, it’s the building letters. I’ll say that that guideline does meet, at least for the front, and the staff’s evaluation does meet the guidelines, so I’d like to, I guess for the record, adjust my comment, but some of the other comments about historic signs and allowing all of it, my comments stand.
But I think the staff recommendation, when you read it, recommends disapproval of the proposed signage, so I don’t think it tacitly gives them approval to put the 119 and paint the thing black up at the top.
Because that does address the square footage, I mean, it doesn’t specifically say that, but it just, I said, disapproval of the proposed sign, and they talked about illumination, they need the overall square footage, but it don’t bring up that one specific thing.
Well, I think, I mean, what I’m reading is, they’re disapproving the new Patsy Cline sign, the illuminated sign, A for the bare bulbs and the flashing separate, but as far as square footage, that sign would be approved if they brought it to the 119?
No, the recommendation is for disapproval.
Just the whole package?
Period. Because there’s too much going on, there’s too much unknown, there, we still don’t know what’s going on in the back, the violation hasn’t been corrected, there’s, now we’ve got a whole different, I don’t know that if you tried to prove it today, this is just me, that you would know exactly what you really are approving.
The request was made in December to come back with a total signage package. This does not address all of the signage on the building.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion? If not?
Mr. Chairman, I move that with 119 Third Avenue South, that we follow staff recommendation and move for disapproval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. One opposed, motion carries.
I’m sorry, who was in opposition? Thank you.
So before I present 1514 Clayton, I’m just going to give a caveat that this was prepared by Melissa Sajid. I’m just reading it because she’s lost her voice, so if there are questions, I may have to have her whisper them to me. And also wanted to say that prior to the meeting, you did receive an email with additional comments and exhibits that was provided by the applicant, so that should have gotten to you via email. So 1514 Clayton Avenue is a request to demolish a non-contributing house and to construct a two-story infill. The existing house was built in the 1950s and does not contribute to the character of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. Staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition. Here is the site plan. At 50 feet wide, the site is the narrowest lot on Clayton Avenue, of the block of Clayton Avenue between Belmont and Granny White Pike. The site is served by an existing front yard parking pad. The applicant wants to reduce the size of the parking pad and use it for the infill. Historic homes on this block of, block face of Clayton are either accessed via the improved rear alley or by driveways that extend to the middle of the house or beyond. While there are some existing front yard parking pads, these appear to have, be in addition to a driveway or alley access. In the past, the commission has not allowed front yard parking, as it typically does not match the historic context. Stack finds that the proposed front yard parking pad is inappropriate since there is improved alley available to the site, and recommends that the site either be accessed via the improved alley, or via a driveway that extends to at least the rear of the infill. Staff finds that the plan does meet all base zoning requirements, and the front setback is similar to the front setbacks of the two adjacent houses. The proposed infill has a two-story form, which does not meet the immediate historic context. While there are two-story houses on the nearby streets, this block of Clayton Avenue between Belmont and Granny White, where the site is located, has a strong historic context of one and one-and-a-half story historic homes. The two-story houses on this block are not historic. The proposed height is approximately 28 feet from grade. The height of the historic homes on this block of Clayton Avenue range from 19 to 28 feet. While staff finds that the overall ridge height could meet the historic context, the two-story massing with a 20-foot, 3-feet-tall eve height does not meet the historic context and does not meet the design guidelines. The width of the house is approximately 34 feet in the front, with a maximum width of 37 feet 8 inches. While this width might be appropriate for a one-and-a-half story house, staff finds it is not appropriate for a two-story structure. Most lots on this block of Clayton Avenue are 60 feet wide, with a collection of 54 feet wide lots. And again, this lot is just 50 feet, so it’s the only 50-foot wide lot in the narrowest lot on the block. The width of the houses on the 54-feet-wide lots range from 36 to 42 feet. While staff finds that the proposed building width could meet the historic context, the two-story form does not meet the historic context and the design guidelines. Here is the left elevation. The cladding materials include brick and fiber cement board siding. Not all the windows, however, on the infill meet the design guidelines. A number of windows are not twice as tall as they are wide, and therefore do not meet the historic proportion of window openings. Also, there are expanses of wall that do not include a window, but should in order to meet the design guidelines. And there are similar concerns with the windows on the right elevation. Paired windows should have a four-to-six inch mullion between them. There are expanses of wall that should include windows. And also, there is a window that is situated too low on the wall to meet the historic rhythm of openings. And finally, there are windows that have inappropriate proportions. The primary roof form is hipped with a 412 pitch. The design guidelines state that infill’s roof slope should match the roof slopes of the immediate context and should be between 612 and 1212. While the design guidelines also state that two-story homes should generally have a hipped roof, staff finds a two-story form is inappropriate for the immediate historic context. Therefore, staff finds that the low-sloped 412 pitch for the hipped roof does not match the historic roof forms of the immediate context, and does not meet the design guidelines. So here is the rear elevation, which includes a covered deck. And here are some context photos. On the top, from left to right, is 1516 Clayton. The house in the middle on the top is the site in question, and then to the right of it is 1512 Clayton, which is a contributing structure. On the bottom is 1513 Clayton Avenue, which is across the street. On the top is 1417 Clayton contributing structure, and on the bottom is 1405, which is also a contributing structure. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the demolition of the existing house, finding that its demolition meets Section 5.2 for appropriate demolition, and does not meet Section 5.1 for inappropriate demolition. Staff recommends disapproval of the new construction, finding that the proposed infill does not meet Sections 2B1A for height, 2B1B for scale, 2B1F for orientation, 2B1E for roof form, and 2B1G for the proportion and rhythm of openings. So staff finds that the project does not meet the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. I believe the applicant is here.
Okay. Any questions for the Melissa’s? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case? Please also say your address, name and address.
Hello, my name is William Smallman. I live at 1512 Paris Avenue, just a couple blocks away. And this is an interesting project, because looking through the guidelines, I feel like I followed them very well. Staff’s comments to recommend, let’s see, they said, the commission has more recently expressed concern about increasing scale of infill, and has looked more to the immediate historic context. And I understand what they’re saying, but when I go to the actual guidelines regarding that, the words “immediate” are nonexistent in there. So I believe if we’re going to start inserting the word “immediate” into recommendations, we should change the guidelines to start doing that. That’s thrown me off when I’ve worked so hard to create a house, to follow the guidelines, and then be told that they’re not, we’re using things that are not in the guidelines. The actual guidelines for height say, the height of the foundation wall, porch roof, and main roof of a new building shall be compatible by not contrasting greatly with those of surrounding historic buildings. No immediate. Scale, same thing, that’s not involved in there. So with that, what I’ve done to try to create and follow the context is use the home across the street, which is, the lots don’t line up exactly, so staff has shown one picture of one home across the street at 1513, but right next to that at 1514, which is also across the street, is a two-story home that was approved by staff in 20, let’s see, I’m sorry, 15, yeah, and I don’t remember the exact date it was approved, but within the last three to five years, let’s say. What staff said on that actual report was, the proposed new structure will be two stories tall with a side-oriented gable, 27 feet and 6 inches above grade. The structure will be 34 feet 6 inches wide at the front. These dimensions are compatible with the surrounding historic houses, which range from roughly 30 feet to 40 feet, and meet the guidelines. So the house immediately across the street is two stories, and met the guidelines of height and scale. And it’s two stories and taller than mine. The house adjacent to mine is also two stories, also approved by staff, and it says height and scale. The proposed infill, the proposed infill is proposed to be two stories tall with a maximizing height of 30 feet 4 inches tall. By comparison, the majority of the houses on Clayton Avenue are one-and-a-half stories and between 20 and 30 feet in height. So they did call out other homes on the street being one-and-a-half story, but they still said that this two-story house meets the context. There are several, several two-and-a-half story structures that are 30 feet and taller along Cedar, Gale, and Belmont Boulevard, which is what was used to create the historic context based on the guidelines when they reviewed this one. In 2011, the commission approved new construction at 1516 Clayton, so they actually referenced the other one across the street, and across the street and towards Belmont Boulevard that is approximately 27 feet tall and two stories in height. Staff finds that the two-story and 30-foot 4-inch height proposed for 1511 Clayton is compatible with the historic context and meets the design guidelines. So the house I proposed is shorter. It is two-story. I do have a bit of a roof line issue. They want it to be 612 instead of 412. I can adjust mine to 612 and still be the same height as the other two approved houses that are adjacent and across the street. There is one other house that was approved by staff, one street over at 1516 Ferguson, and this is actually approved on staff level, so it never became, came before the commission. It is 29 feet 3 inches tall, two stories, approved in 2015. Ferguson only has three two-story homes on it total. There are 33 total houses on Ferguson. Yet, it was possible for staff to find the two-story house that is taller than its neighbors as compatible, because there were three other ones out of 33, which I feel like is very similar to what we’re dealing with one street over on Clayton now. So I think, I believe that staff’s objection to the two-story home based on height and scale is quite arbitrary, based on the consistent approval of two-story homes in the surrounding context. The two-story home meets the guideline and staff’s description of the surrounding context on Clayton Avenue from the approvals of 1516 and 1511 Clayton Avenue. And then I’ll go into, follow back up on the roof. So our current proposal is a 412. I’d be happy to change that to a 612. That’s no problem working with staff, as long as they give me the same height overall that’s been approved and recommended on the other two on the same street. The orientation with the driveway, if, so there’s an existing front parking pad. I’d like to continue to use it. If it is normal for staff to make people take them away, then I’m fine with that too. But I’d prefer to keep the existing without being forced to remove it. And I have no problem adding a sidewalk as recommended. The proportion and rhythm of openings, no problem. I’ve already sent that to staff that I will change all of those. And, let’s see. That is it. So I’ve agreed to work with staff on all of their requests, except for the two-story form. And as long as we can stick with the context that was established and the previous recommendations on the same street, adjacent and across the street, then I think we should be in good shape on this one. Does, actually, one other thing. I did go through as many staff reports as I could find in between 12th and Belmont, all the way from Ashwood to Gale, which is the entire overlay. I believe I found nine houses, and of those nine, every single one of them that was approved, which is all of the infill homes, were taller than what I’ve proposed. And a significant amount of them were two-story, when their neighbors were in the same context as what I’ve asked for. And there may be others, the only ones I could find online, going back, I think, seven years after that, I couldn’t get access to any of them, they were, I was told to do a public records request to get anything else. Let’s see if there was anything else. I think that is it. I would just like this to be a non-arbitrary decision, and based on the guidelines and previous recommendations. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
This one’s pretty particular, and it relates to, on the drawings, the window heads are shown with, if you could just clarify, sort of, on the front facade, I guess I’m referring to, it’s kind of Prairie style, would you, that’s kind of what we’re shooting for here. The 4-inch trim sort of wraps up and then goes just under where, is there a soffit that returns from the roof truss? Or is that sort of sloping back up, and will we have a taller trim? What I’m, the real question I’m asking is, 4 inches at the head of a window, sort of slammed right up against the roof line, is a little, seems a little thin for what, A, might structurally be required, and B, just visually what you would typically see on a window opening?
So that’s more of a freeze...
So that's more of a freeze board, I guess, if you want to call it that. It's actually, ties right into it.
Okay. And, but that is, it just appears from the things that are dimensioned, that's about four inches at the window head.
Right. It is. Yeah, but I would say if that's something that's a concern, that would be fairly easy to adjust.
Small detail, I just wanted to make sure.
I'd be open to things like that. Last thing, one thing I would like is, I'm very open to working on the house. The one thing I do not want to adjust is the two-story form. If I need to work on the roof, that's okay, but I'd prefer to either be denied because it's a two-story home, or approved. I don't want to be approved with a condition of a one-and-a-half-story home. Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing, see your hand? Nope. Okay. Seeing unclosed, oh, are you coming up? Okay. Please state your name and address.
My name is Lindsay Moffett, and thank you for your service on this commission. We truly appreciate it. I am a past president of Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors. I'm a 20-year neighborhood resident, and I'm currently chair of our zoning conservation committee. I see some new faces since I was here last. Nice to see you. Today, I'm here on behalf of the steering committee, and I request that you support the staff recommendations. Berkeley's going to talk a little bit about context, but we, as the steering committee, have asked the staff to tighten what's been done in the past as far as context, and look to the current neighbors rather than down the block or several streets over. We object to this two-story design on a section of street that is one or one-and-a-half stories. The house I think he referred to was approved in 2011, which was one of the houses that triggered our request that we tighten what we do in context with other houses on the neighborhood street. We also strongly vehemently, I don't know how more, much stronger to say it, object to a parking pad in the front yard. That's not something that's historic. That's not something that's appealing, and we'd like to see that removed. So we ask that you support staff recommendations and that this application be approved as submitted. Thank you.
My name is Lance Thomas, and I live at 1518 Ferguson Avenue, which is the street immediately north of Clayton Avenue. I am here to speak in opposition to the proposed height and scale of the new construction plan for 1514 Clayton. First, I believe the proposed building disregards the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Conservation Overlay. Section 2B of this document regulates both the height and scale of new construction and states that both parameters shall be compatible by not contrasting greatly with those of surrounding historic buildings. The proposal of 1514 is to replace a single-story duplex with a full two-story building. While this might be okay on other streets within the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood, which is defined by full two-story houses, Clayton Avenue is mostly single-story or craftsman-style homes with only a finished attic. So the issue here is a full two-story building. As staff noted, there are other two-story buildings in the vicinity, but the only full two-story house on this section of Clayton, and I believe this is one Mr. Smallman addressed, sits on a quarter-acre lot, which is more than 50% larger than the .016 acre lot at 1514. Second, allowing an infill structure on Clayton that does not conform in size or scale to surrounding properties would begin to erode the integrity and historical character of the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. And the future developers could simply cite this proposed oversized structure as evidence to justify building. Additional buildings that, much like this one, far exceed the characteristic size and scale of the true historical homes within the neighborhood. For these reasons, I encourage the commission to deny the construction aspect of this appeal. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Berkeley Allen District Council member, and I represent two historic districts, Belmont Hillsborough and Hillsborough West End, and want to speak just a little bit about the whole question of context. I think this is a lovely design with the recommendations that have been made. It would look great on Belmont Boulevard where there are lots of very large houses. I commend the owner on his, on his proposal. But when I was elected in 2011, one of the first meetings we had was with the Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors and historic staff to talk about context and what defined context. And the, and the question was basically, yes, there are very large houses within our historic district, but they're mostly on Belmont Boulevard. And to put houses that size on our little side streets is changing the context on those side streets and changing the character. And so we very specifically asked that context be confined to surrounding buildings. And I don't have Webster's dictionary with me, but I think if you look up "surrounding," it doesn't mean somewhere else far away. And so we have been very appreciative that both the staff and the commission, in the past, I would say, year or two, have been more considering of the more adjacent context as opposed to anywhere within that historic district. And we're thankful for that, and I think that is where there are some new projects that came in around 2011, and those were what drove the neighborhoods to beg for a more appropriate definition of context. So just to, and some of y'all may have come on board since that, that discussion has happened, but it's certainly one that both of my historic neighborhoods felt very strongly about. We appreciate the lovely big buildings when they're on a street where there are other lovely big buildings, but they, they have the potential to make a very large change in what the, what the context becomes and what the overall feel of a street is when suddenly a one-story street now has a two-story, just because one exists several blocks over. So thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay. You actually do have a two-minute rebuttal, if you would like to use that.
So is it okay to ask you guys a question, to have an answer?
Probably not, but if you have a-
Okay, maybe you can answer later. From my perspective, I work very hard to follow the guidelines, and that is what is put out in writing for me to follow and has been passed where myself, as a neighbor, live in Berkeley's district. I live in this overlay. That is all I can go on, and I've not been able to participate or invited to participate in any of the closed-door meetings that happen. All I can do is follow the guidelines and hope that they're interpreted by only what is in writing. To stretch from that is very difficult for anybody to prepare for when it just, it becomes very arbitrary at that point. And I do want to stress that surrounding two stories, the only reason I went with that is because if you read the staff reports, it says that that is the surrounding context, across the street and immediately next door. It is not something that I tried to stretch down the street and pull in Belmont Boulevard. I read the staff report from the two closest infill houses and followed the guidelines that were in the staff report and the recommendations, and I stayed within every one of those items. I believe that is as far as anybody can go in trying to figure out what's the guidelines. Follow the guidelines, follow previous staff reports. Other than that, it becomes arbitrary to stray from that. And that's a large concern for myself as a neighbor and a property owner. I probably, I live two, two blocks away, so I feel like I have a very vested interest in this neighborhood. And I'd like my voice to be heard just the same as anybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
Kwan, I had a question as far as the gentleman, when he talked about "immediate" and "surrounding" with the guidelines. How much does that change the guidelines around it?
Well, what it specifically says is, you know, "It shall be compatible by not contrasting greatly with the surrounding historic buildings." Now, it is sort of a term of art, so it's subject to this commission's interpretation. And in the past, if you have made the interpretation that we're going to consider only the houses on this street, that's how you interpret the word "surrounding." So I don't believe that the term immediately has to be in the guidelines for it to be required. If, if the commission reads the word and you consider surrounding the houses that are directly adjacent to it, then that's your interpretation of that, that word and how you would apply the guidelines.
You know, it has, over the past couple of years, we have, just like Councilmember Berkeley has said, that we have looked at these massing more, more closely because of how it affects or it is adjacent to a contributing, and this is for how I interpret that, a contributing structure that is not going to come down because it's preserved and because it's going to stay as, that's, that's our charge is to protect the, in preservation. So when we look at that and see that if indeed a two-story or a one-and-a-half story doesn't lend itself to the contributing environment, then that is when we have that consideration for surrounding context. So we are looking at that a little bit more clearly for that.
Yeah, while I appreciate the applicant's, you know, comments and research, you know, I read it all over the weekend, just the different houses, and tried to kind of Google Maps and stuff. You know, I do, I do agree, I mean, that, the points he made today are just, and I agree with Kwan, are legal, that, you know, that kind of just is the nature of a, of a commission. I can't control what people approved years ago, and I think as a commission, that's just kind of how it, how it goes. And again, agreeing with Commissioner Bell, you know, that, and, you know, just on the aerial that I'm looking at here, I mean, it's very small houses. And the applicant kept using the word "adjacent," while I'm looking at adjacent houses to me, and they're, you know, they're very, they're very small, modest homes on, on smaller lots. And I agree with Councilmember Berkeley Allen about, you know, yes, lovely house regardless of it being a nice design. It's, I just don't think it's appropriate for the street. I don't think it's appropriate for the spot. And I agree with staff on this one.
Any other discussion? Any comments?
I make a motion in regards to 1514 Clayton Avenue to approve staff recommendation in the disapproval of this project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Chair, if you don't mind, there was also a recommendation to approve the demolition of the historic structure. So if you wanted to make a motion about that, help staff.
In regard, do I have to redo the whole thing?
Well, I think what you said was the staff report.
Oh.
So I think that both are there.
Yeah. So staff report, approval of demolition of existing home, disapproval of the new infill home.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next is 2008 Cedar Lane.
Okay. There's been a lot of back and forth. You guys should have received via email some documents from the applicant, some letters of support for his project, some letters of opposition. And then in your seats here today, you also received a few more, letters of public comment, and a map. Just to be clear, the map was submitted by the applicant. That's not my map. Okay. So, the house at 2008 Cedar Lane is a non-contributing structure that sits on a dead-end street in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. A staff permit has been issued for its demolition, although this permit has expired. The house originally sat on a 112-foot-wide lot, which is one of the widest lot, one of the widest lots on the block. But the owner subdivided the lot in 2011, so now we have two lots. The one here in yellow is 50 feet wide, and the subject lot in pink is 62 feet wide. They are now the narrowest lots on the block. The carport on the side of the existing house extends over the new property line. As you can see, the subject lot is also exceptionally deep at about 392 feet. It is actually one of about five blocks, five lots on the block that are that deep. This block of Cedar Lane contains one-and-a-half-story houses on wide lots with significant side yards and generous front setbacks. There are two newer non-contributing structures in the immediate vicinity. One is an apartment building at the end of the street, that's the one there on the left, and the other is just east of the subject lot. These two newer structures are not used to establish historic context. The applicant is proposing a new single-family residence and an outbuilding. The total footprint of the dwelling plus the outbuilding will be about 3,667 square feet. Staff has concerns about the overall massing of the house. The combined height, width, and depth create a house that is too large for the historic context, particularly given the narrow lot. First, let's look at the height. The proposed design is one-and-a-half stories tall, which is appropriate for the context. The proposed eve heights are about 12 to 13 feet, depending on grade. The ridge height is about 30 feet, 10 inches from finished floor height at the front door, which is actually taller than the two-story house we just looked at, which I believe was about 28. The tallest historic house on this block is 31 feet tall, and that's a bit of an outlier. All the rest of the historic examples range from 21 to 29 feet tall. This 31-foot-tall house is two doors down from the subject property. Between that house and the end of the block, there are two newer non-contributing structures that are both 32 feet high, one smaller historic home, and these two buildable lots. Staff is concerned that this could become a pocket of newer houses that are all taller than the historic context. The impact of the additional height would be further exacerbated by the slope of the topography, with these taller houses sitting at a higher grade than the shorter ones across the street. Staff finds that building a new house as tall as the tallest historic house is not appropriate in this case, given the overall proposed massing. In terms of width, the proposed infill will be 42 feet wide. All of the historic houses in the block are wider and range from 47 to 75 feet wide. However, upon evaluation, staff realized that nearly all of the other lots with historic houses are 100 feet wide, and the average width of historic houses is around 57 and 1/2 feet. Historic houses occupy about 60% of the lot width, allowing for wide side yards and a distinctive streetscape and rhythm of spacing. If the current 62-foot-wide lot followed this pattern, the house would be about 37 and 1/2 feet wide. There isn't a magic number of percentage, however, given the typical wide yard-to-house ratio seen on this block, staff finds the proposed width is inappropriate and does not proportionally match the historic context for rhythm of spacing. In terms of depth, the proposed depth of the house is considerable. It's about 95 feet, 4 inches, which includes that covered rear patio but does not include the depth of the garage. The average depth of historic houses on the block is 55 feet. Staff finds that the given, that given the depth of the lot, the proposed house depth could be appropriate, but only if the width and height at the street are well within the historic context. Given that the proposed width and height both push the limits in terms of historic context and that the exceptional depth is proposed, staff finds the proposal does not meet Sections 2B, 1A, and B of the design guidelines for height and scale. And I just wanted to show you the final elevation. This is the rear. A few final notes on the house. The proposed setbacks of the house are all appropriate, with the front being set back about 90 feet from the street, aligns up with the houses on either side. The known materials include fiberboard lap siding, architectural shingle roof, and wood windows. Staff finds the known materials are appropriate. Now, moving on to the outbuilding. The height, square footage, design, roof, dormer, and materials all meet the design guidelines. The only exception is that the commission typically requires two separate garage doors for a street-facing two-bay garage, and we see one here. This is a one-and-a-half-story garage. There may have been a typo calling it a one-story in your staff report, so I apologize for that. There are two setback issues with the garage. The first has already been resolved, but just quickly, the garage is 749 square feet, sits just over 3 feet from the side property line. Outbuildings above 700 square feet must sit at least 5 feet from the side property line. The applicant has agreed to shrink the footprint of the outbuilding to less than 700 square feet so that it may sit 3 feet, 1 inch from the side property line without a setback determination. determination. The second issue is that the guidelines require a 20-foot separation between the house and an outbuilding. The applicant is proposing a nine-foot separation with the covered breezeway connector, as indicated by that red line there. The commission has allowed outbuildings to sit closer than 20 feet when there are slight constraints, but in this case, with a lot depth of nearly 400 feet, there is no such constraint. Last spring, the applicant was advised by staff to place the outbuilding in roughly the same location as historic outbuildings on the block, which this proposal does. This is the ideal location, however, the outbuilding should still be 20 feet from the house. The nonconforming condition is being created by the depth of the house and the relatively narrow width of the lot. In this instance, the house should be less deep, or the outbuilding should be moved further back in the lot. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed infill and outbuilding, finding that the primary dwelling does not meet Sections 2B, A, B, and C for height, scale, and rhythm of spacing, and that the outbuilding does not meet Section 2B I-2 for appropriate location and setbacks. The applicant is here today and wishes to present his case, but first, you have questions for me?
Oh, no, I'll still let the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jenny. The applicant like to come forward, please, to state your case, please state your name and address.
I've got some stuff to hand out. Thank you, Robin. William Smallman, 1512 Paris Avenue. So again, I'm stuck in the following the guidelines section here. But what I've done, again, thank you, Jenny, for all your help. On this one, I want to start kind of at the beginning, where the very first thing I did was try to establish the garage location. This lot is extremely deep. Garage location is very important, to not cut the yard in half, being 400 feet deep. If you put a garage in the center of the yard, 20 feet away from the house, your visibility from anywhere inside the house into the backyard will be significantly reduced. Not sure if that would be called a hardship, but this would be a personal home, I have two young kids. Part of the idea of moving here would be to have the large yard, and the entire home was designed to prevent the separation and cutting off that visual of the yard. I started actually in 2013 with Sean, sent a, the first plan, with a garage in the basement access off the right side. I was told, even though it does meet context, the slope does not meet on this one, so I moved on to the next one, where you can see in the email, I was told that historic context would put it where I put it. The plan that I submitted with that to determine historic context has not changed. From May of last year to now, the garage is in the exact location, the exact same distance from the house, and I was told to keep it in that context. I feel like if there is a way to grant a variance on this one, to keep it closer, historic context is a very good reason to grant that variance. So that takes care of the garage. The next item I'm struggling with is, I guess we'll just jump into the precedent that I've been told that I'm setting by having an empty lot next door. It worries me that we are using a property that may or may not ever be built on as context. There is an empty lot, but there are many times in this neighborhood that there are empty lots, and they're not used, and they never were used historically, to decide what is going next door. I feel like the only reason I'm using precedent is because that word is in the staff report. I know there's no precedent in these buildings, but it says, "The applicant for the new single-family home and the garage, the new lot at 2010 Cedar will likely be built as well," which, that's a, not, the only reason that would be built is if I can't build a house to live in, and then I will build it. But, so the precedent on this lot is important. So, staff's report is saying that we're worried about precedent, that's why I bring it up, as it will likely impact what is proposed for the neighboring property. As we saw in the last case, it does not matter what staff approves on this one regarding the next one, they do not, the commission doesn't vote like that. They look at each property individually. Something that is a non-contributing house built next door across the street does not come into play in that, and that was just established in the last one, at 1514 Clayton. So, but I do think that is a large concern, is to have a 50-foot lot, and it seems arbitrary to use a vacant lot that may or may not be built as precedent. Then I'd like to talk a little bit about the width. I first came in at 42 feet wide, which is exactly where the proposed is. I was told by staff, by email and in person, no problems. That's excellent, keep moving forward. And that was at the beginning of February, or January, actually. So I kept moving forward, made all the other changes they wanted, spent thousands of dollars adjusting the plan to get it to be just like they wanted, and then two days before the deadline, I was told, we now want it to be 37 feet wide, which seems very arbitrary, considering we were working all on the same page at the 42 feet, and I actually met with three staff members when we all agreed on that. Further into the width issue, at my proposed plan is 10% more narrow than the next smallest home on the block that's an existing contributing home. I'm 18% more narrow than the second smallest, and I'm 44% more narrow than the largest, which is adjacent to me. So the adjacent home to me is 75 feet wide. I'm going to look pretty odd at 37 feet wide. The existing homes on the street range from 47 to 75. Mine's 42, which is smaller than any other home. Staff's recommendation brings me down to 37. And I also want to point out, staff's, the math on here, saying that because the lot is 40% narrower than other lots, it is 40% narrower than some lots, but it is, if you look at other homes, that's a bad example to use that 40%, because there are plenty of five houses, so 40% of these are not, are less than 100. So I feel like that's a little bit of a steering challenge there. So I think the average lot-to-house width ratio is actually 65%, which you can see on the map. And I actually went, not just on the block, which you can use that, I went as far as you can see the line of sight with topo from the house to the top of the hill. Average is 66% if you include those. I'm asking for 68%, so I am 3% off. And on a 62-foot-wide lot, and the other ones are 100, the fact that we're discussing 3% is amazing to me, but we are. So there's that. Then, to reiterate some of the other things, so on the width, at 37 and a half feet wide, which is what staff's recommended, I will be 18% smaller than the smallest home on my block, and I will be 28% smaller than the second, and I will be 50% more narrow than the house adjacent to me. Height, came in early January, sent the plans in, staff had a question on height, asked me to bring it down to 31 feet 10 inches. I submitted the plan back, just as they asked. We agreed that it was perfectly fine. We talked about how to handle the topo challenge, slope left to right, to get an average grade. We all agreed that that was fine, I submitted the plans, all good. The only time I hear that it is lower is now in a staff report, which is, makes it, again, feel arbitrary. We had all agreed that the height was appropriate. The only time it changes is later, I met with three staff members during that discussion, and I submitted the new plans, we were all good with it. So then, I believe I might be there. Then, with what I submitted, on page one, you can see, shows the two lines where I was told to put the garage, to keep it in historic context, to be inside that zone. This is what I just handed out to you. And on page two is a project at 2715 Brightwood, which was just approved in 2016 by the commission. The next page shows the context there, just to give an example of how this is interpreted. The new home is on the corner of Wildwood and Brightwood. It is 73% of lot coverage. The historic context is, as you can see on the previous page, 63%, so they were approved at 10% above historic context, but I'm being told to be below. Actually, 3% is a big deal on this one, and you can see the percentages on the houses across. Next page shows how the lot is small compared to its neighbor, and helps put in perspective the percentages. The next page shows the range, 51% to 75% is the lot coverage ratios, house to building area. The average is 66, I'm asking for 68. I feel like I'm extremely in context. Next page, 1902 Cedar, this is just to give other examples of the historic context in the neighborhood, that not everything is consistent the way the houses were built out. Cedar has a range on this one block of 38% to 66% all contributing homes. Linden and Altrua, the range of those five homes are 33 to 70%, they float all in between. You can go to Belmont and Cedar, and you can see the two houses in the middle cover the lots, yet the larger lots do not. You can go to Blair and find the same pattern, you can go to Ashwood and find the same pattern. I'll save the last 33 seconds, thank you.
Thank you. Before you say, did you have a question for, is this for the applicant?
Yeah, a question for staff, but I wanted to hear what the applicant had to say.
Okay.
And I guess I'll go ahead and ask that question, which is that, if, I don't want to say reading between the lines, but more if, staff, in terms of the width, the height is appropriate, but the width on the lot was at issue, would that then mean that a house that was narrower would then be deeper, and that would be acceptable? I mean, I know you can only review what you see, but is that more appropriate?
Sure.
And I'm just, I guess, leading the discussion to this, the locomotive approach that we've seen on so many narrow lots, that doesn't necessarily yield a better outcome, if you will.
Right. And I heard some feedback about that, too, from neighbors. I don't, I don't necessarily think that there is a hard and fast percentage, that it doesn't necessarily need to be 37 and a half feet wide, but our concern is the overall massing that we're ending up with here. We have an extremely deep house proposed, and we don't mind the depth as much, as long as at the street, your width and height are really fitting into the context. But we felt like this proposal was pushing that limit on the height, pushing the limit contextually on the width, and having such a deep, such a deep footprint, that the massing was just out of scale for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Lindsay Moffett, and I'm here on behalf of Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Steering Committee. Our overlay was passed by over 70% support of the neighborhood in April of 2005, with a thoughtful planned outlook for the future of our neighborhood down the road. Well, this is the future, and this is down the road. We have many new neighbors who may not realize the enormous benefit that our overlay has afforded property owners in BHN. The reason it is so desirable is that the historic nature of the homes has been preserved, and for the most part, thoughtfully developed. It's the infill development that we have struggled with. As I see in the staff reports, one of the major concerns is the lot next door. What's built on this lot, contrary to what Mr. Smallman says, the lot next door will be impacted. So we want to be thoughtful about that. A lot of the neighbors were not aware that this was happening, because staff reports didn't come out until Friday, and so a lot of them are out of town, and we've heard, I think you received some emails even today, from some folks. And I'd like to read some, if not all, of the neighbor next door immediately to this property. Scott Aiken and Susan Foxman, Susan was here, she had to leave to pick up her children. Dear members of the Historic Zoning Commission, we first heard about this project on February 18th, and we contacted the owner directly on February 19th to discuss same. From our conversation on the 19th, we are hopeful that, if given more time, to meet with neighbors and dialogue about development in conformity with the overlay requirements, the project can be altered to both comply with the overlay and be acceptable to the owner. As such, we request that the hearing on this project be deferred. If deferment is not possible, then we request that the commissioners consider the following staff report recommendations to disapprove this project. By publicly expressing our opinion on this matter, we find ourselves in a most difficult position, as this requires us to disagree with our potential future neighbor. We take our obligation for civility and courtesy to our current and future neighbors seriously, and regret that we have to take this action. We hope that, should the owner's family decide to move to the subject lot, we will all be able to rejoice in a new family in our community, and agree to disagree on this plan. We have currently, we have reviewed staff recommendations for this project, and agree with the staff that the project is, as currently proposed, would be significantly and noticeably in contrast to the existing height, scale, rhythm of spacing of the other lots on the 2,000 block of Cedar Lane, as well as neighboring blocks. We fully accept that development will come to 2008 Cedar Lane, and welcome the new neighbors and potential increase to our property's value, but we firmly believe that all development must adhere to the overlay requirements. It is important to note that 2008 Cedar Lane project will set a precedent for the future development on the adjacent and even more narrow lot at 2010 Cedar Lane. This 2010 lot is currently undeveloped and under common ownership with the 2008 lot. The unique narrow nature of these two lots was created when the owner subdivided what had been the largest lot on the block. As noted in the staff recommendations, staff has concerns that this cluster of houses at 2008 and 2010 Cedar could become a pocket of newer homes that are larger than the historic context. Thank you for your consideration of this matter and your work on this commission, Scott Aiken and Susan Foxman.
Mister, thank you again. Just briefly, I'm Berkeley Allen Councilmember for the district, and I appreciate Mr. Smallman reaching out to me on this project. I think the biggest issue simply is that, for whatever reasons, we have not had the opportunity to make the neighbors aware of what's being proposed, and I think some conversations have begun, that I believe can end productively, and that between the owner working with staff, which he seems to have been done very diligently, and perhaps just having conversations with the neighbors, that any opposition that is currently here could be dealt with, and it could be a good process for everyone. So I would just simply say, I'm interested to hear what your conversation is. To me, deferral might offer the opportunity for some conversations with neighbors, and also to work out some of the issues that may make it seem more compatible historically. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, applicant, you had about 30 minutes, 30 seconds. I can give you a minute if you want to rebuttal, and also if you wanted to consider the deferral.
All right, so, at this point, I'm, you know, I'd rather go ahead and vote today, and then work with neighbors to amend the plan anyway. I don't mind working with the neighbors, but I would like to see how this is voted on, just because I do believe it's the exact project we've worked on for a long time. But I've already told Berkeley that I'll be happy to work with the neighbors afterwards to come back with a new plan, but I would like to see this one approved, because I believe it is a very approvable plan. But I do want to put a few things just of record, just to say, just questions, the arbitrariness of this is that, how arbitrary it will be that I'm going to be the most narrow house on the lot, on the whole block, but not be approved? How arbitrary is it that my height was approved, but is now is not? How arbitrary it is that I am shorter than my next-door neighbor, and yet I am too tall? How arbitrary it is that I am 50% more narrow than the house to the left, and yet I may or may not be approved? And how arbitrary it is that a house that, a lot that is empty and does not have a home on it is being used as precedent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
I'm looking at, you know, the elevation, and sort of in total, considering all the information here, and I guess just as a general comment, this one, I guess for me, does pass the smell test, the sniff test, just on its surface. I'm struggling with the, sort of the miniscule... I'm struggling with the, sort of the minuscule, or at least in my opinion, the minuscule sort of adjustments that have been proposed. I look at the streetscape and see wider homes, and I don't see this contrasting greatly. Admittedly, something beyond our control, which is a subdivision of a lot, is going to impact the street. But I think that to use our hammer for us to mold that, sort of retaliation for that, retaliation is not the right word. I think we just, we have to accept that for what it is. And there are two lots there, and there may or may not be a home next door, but certainly it will have to fit into the guidelines, just like any other application would. And I don't, that, to me, will affect what happens on the lot, but I'm not sure that we can, all we can do is use the guidelines at our, you know, that we have before us to do the best we can to fit that in, because legally it's a subdivided lot.
Thanks. More discussion?
I mean, in that regard, yeah, I do believe we can't say, you know, I don't think it's the fact that there's an empty lot as the precedence. I think it's the fact that now, because it's subdivided, this lot is one of the smallest in the, you know, one of the, the narrowest, that's the word I'm looking for, on the street. So it's not the fact that there's an empty lot, it's that now it's not one lot that's a large lot that would allow for, I think, more width. Again, there's not a hard and fast percentage, but, you know, if you fill that whole, very narrow lot with a house, and then the next, you know, someone buys the lot next door and they want to do the same thing, then you've got two houses right up next to each other. And that's, I guess, what we're trying to avoid, in that it doesn't, with the height and scale and massing, that it fits in to the street. And so, I mean, you know, some of the thing, just overall, again, I'm not sure, you know, we're not involved in anyone's working with staff at the time being, but overall, I mean, I do just find it, you know, 95 feet deep and the wide, you know, wide percentage of the narrow lot, I just think overall, it's just a little, it's a little too large for what I'm, in my opinion, for the neighborhood and the adjacent properties.
Just my comment, kind of, actually, both I agree with, in the sense that the, it does seem to fit the street, but maybe it's kind of what you're saying, and maybe it's just when you, little pieces of it, maybe it's a little too long, maybe that makes it a little, the scale, a little too big, but just where that is, is where we probably have to be a little bit more descriptive if we were gonna, you know, approve pieces of it. Well, that's not the right way, but, you know, it almost might work from a street, but maybe it is too much, too long. But anyway, kind of, just wanted to echo that with Ben, it seems like the, it passes the first pass of it.
What? I'm sorry.
Just the, I think he used sniff test, but it passes that kind of test, but.
On the surface as a whole, I'm struggling for reasons to, to not pick it, if you will. I think the height and the applicant's description, and the staff's description, it's not contrasting greatly if you look at the specifics of some of the contributing homes around. I can, in my mind, sort of piece together all the homes, and I'm looking at the Google Earth, sort of bird's eye view image, and more specifically looking at, in terms of placement on the lot, the house in the lot just next door, which may not be contributing, but its placement on the lot and the spacing between those is the same, its dimension is the same space as the driveway that passes by the house on the, those are the same. And so I'm, you know, the two houses, and again, these vicinity maps off Metro map, they're not surveys, but they generally show position on the lot. You've got two houses that are sort of closer together on one, and there's a big gap. And to use that, I'm going back to the lot is what it is. It's what it's legally defined as, and to put a locomotive house on this, that doesn't seem better to me. And that's all, those would be my comments about this. I don't find it contrasting greatly.
I think putting the, also looking at the outhouse, there's no exception, nothing that would give us cause not to stick to the regulations of having 20 feet between the primary residence and the outhouse. I mean, as deep as this lot is, that we can't come up with, and there's not deviation in elevation that would make it any more difficult. So I think that's another thing that we need to.
I would certainly agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Brian, do you, let me, I've got a question. Do you remember, I'm wondering about the approval, of course, the approval of the subdivide of this lot? And that came, would have had to come before the planning commission, correct? And I'm asking that, just because, even though it's a small L, but there, I know that they would not allow, I mean, not subdivide, I just wondered if there were any exceptions to why it was subdivided, or allowed to be subdivided and creating an L-shaped lot, although it's a real small L.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't speak to that. I don't remember if it was.
Yeah, it just, it seems like an odd approval, because creating two very, very, I mean, a very small lot.
Apologize for that. I don't know if legal has anything on that, but.
No, I was just gonna make sure we didn't stray too far off of the design guidelines.
Probably has to do with RS 7.5, there's a minimum lot size, and two was better than one, in terms of maximizing your property value. So I wouldn't say it didn't go a lot further than that, but that's pure speculation, and it is what it is.
Cyril, I think you were, had something.
I'm like Ben, I sort of felt like this felt like, especially from the front elevation, the street view, that it would contribute nicely to that neighborhood. The setback on the front seemed to be appropriate. You know, I think there is a question anytime, by my calculation and looking at the regs, it looks like a little over 4,500 square feet when you put everything together. I did agree with Ann that, yes, I don't see a real compelling reason not to have that garage detached as opposed to, as opposed to close to the house. And I think that 20 feet could be achieved, but it is a large house, but I felt like it was reasonably appropriate, so.
If there's no more discussion, want to make a motion? Why don't you make a motion, and then I'll give you a chance for discussion, Ben?
Sure. So on the application of 2008 Cedar Lane, I move approval with, as submitted, with the following conditions, that the outbuilding or the garage be in compliance with the guidelines, with a minimum 20-foot separation. The applicant has shown willingness to work with the staff, and I think the staff can approve, at the staff level, they can approve that 20-foot guideline is met, and also that the staff have the opportunity to approve standard things like location, the mechanicals, door and window submissions, roof color, integral roof colors, and integrally colored exterior materials.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. No more discussion? Any more discussion? Do you guys have any discussion?
Sorry, we were looking, no.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. I will say we have been going two hours and almost two hours and a half. Do we need to take a quick break? Okay, let's just do a quick three-minute break, then. Let's do it, I'll make it five, but let's try to get back so we can keep rolling.
That's been deferred, sir, at the applicant's request.
All right, so the next is 1507 Fatherland.
Okay, here we are. 1507 Fatherland Street is an application to construct a one-story, sorry, to construct a two-story addition to a one-story historic house. That's the house there in the center. It's green, a front gabled bungalow. The addition will be at the rear, matching the width of the existing building with an alcove on the left side, where it connects to the existing building, to give it a physical separation between the old and the new. The addition, there are the front and rear elevations. The additions will have a front gabled form, which is compatible with the form of the existing house, which also is a front gable, and will match the pitch of the existing roof as well. The ridge of the new roof will be, oh, this outline, that's what's existing in that. And the new roof will be four feet higher, the ridge of the new roof, four feet higher than the original roof. The orientation of the new ridge is parallel, or matches the orientation of the existing roof, but that ridge, the new ridge, will be offset by four feet, so that while the ridges, the new ridge is four feet higher, the plane of the new roof, or the slope of the new roof, is six feet higher outside of the silhouette of the existing building, which leaves a very large wall space, or a large amount of addition that extends beyond the silhouette of the house. The guidelines do say that additions can be up to four feet taller, or when necessary, they can be up to four feet taller beyond the shadow line of an historic house, but that they should be hipped or clipped gabled roofs to reduce the visibility. Staff didn't find that, so the guidelines say that the additions can be up to that taller with that condition when necessary. And that's taken to mean that if the lot conditions are such that an appropriately scaled addition would not be possible, staff didn't really think, or didn't see any conditions of this lot that precluded an appropriate scale, appropriately scaled addition from being built. And also, the proposed roof doesn't have a hip or clip, so it doesn't meet that section of the design guidelines. Bottom image there is the rear, and then side elevations, you see the top image there, the east elevation, you see that the eve height of the addition is six feet higher than the eve of the historic house. The materials of the addition are cement fiber siding and asphalt shingle. The window and, the window rhythm and proportion is contemporary, but not out of character with the historic house. Staff found that those things met the applicable sections of the design guidelines. One other item, going back to the site plan, it is a rather long historic house, and the addition is not necessarily all that long. It's not longer or deeper than the historic building, but together, they encroach into the 20-foot separation between principal and outbuilding that the guidelines require, going back to the elevations there. So looking at the left and right side of the building, it is a one-story house, and staff finds that the scale of a two-story addition, which extends more than four feet beyond the silhouette or shadow line of the building, is not appropriate. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed two-story addition to the one-story historic house at 1507 Fatherland Street, finding that the scale of the addition is not compatible and that does not meet the design guidelines for additions in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And I can answer questions, but the applicant is here as well. You've received public comment, which was emailed to you before the meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Sean at this point? Okay, thanks. If the applicant would like to come forward and state your case, and please give us your name and address.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here regarding my home on 1507 Fatherland Street. My name is Allison Tease, and this is my husband, Ryan. My husband's lived in Nashville for nearly 20 years, and I actually grew up in Lachlan Springs, neighborhood of East Nashville. It was my dream to own a historic home in the neighborhood where I grew up. So nearly 10 years ago, we purchased our home on Fatherland Street in Lachlan Springs. It had an odd layout and needed a lot of work, but we were in the neighborhood where we wanted to be, and we loved our home despite its quirks. We have countless stories from when we used to pull all-nighters, working on the house room by room. We have a lot of experience with power tools and paintbrushes, thanks to 1507 Fatherland Street. It's been close to a decade since we bought it, and now that our family is about to expand, our next dream of a proper home renovation is what brings us before you today. Soon into the planning process, after talking to many professionals, we realized the hardships that our lot provided for renovation. The narrow width of our home, which is just over 24 feet wide, and a height of less than 16 feet tall, the large upward slope of our backyard and our existing garage effectively prevent any other option other than an addition that is taller than our existing home. In order to stay in our home that we love and near the neighbors that we cherish, we've asked our architect, Craig Kennedy, and his team at Bootstrap, to design a cohesive addition that would add the usable space that we need for our expanding family. We look forward to listening to the commissioner's deliberation and conversation with staff. Our hope is that it better clarifies interpretations of the guidelines relative to the hardships presented by our house, so we can work with staff on a design that our family can enjoy for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Craig Kennedy. I live at 1432 Greenwood Avenue. I'm the architect for the project, really here today to just seek design guideline clarification and review of this proposal through a lens of how other projects have been approved in a subordinate nature or requiring two-story or one-and-a-half-story additions. My company, Bootstrap, regularly submit projects to historic zoning. Probably half of our projects over the last nine years have been submitted to, in historic districts with view characteristics not unlike what we're encountering here. You know, it is something rare, I guess, for us, that we're sort of challenging some of these views and different things. That said, at 1507 Fatherland, it is a unique situation in the sense that it is a front-facing gable. We've submitted a couple of design options through process with Sean, and understand at this point, we were initially reading the four-foot offset as a vertical height offset. We understand now that it's the aligned profile of the existing house and are willing to make adjustments to design to fit within that. We started out very close to that, met with Sean, and we had some discussion about views from oblique angles and different things, and so that's when we modified the design to what we submitted and then got the sort of further clarification of the offset of shadow line, which makes sense, and we're willing to sort of fit within that constraint. Really, what we want to accomplish today is to, you know, make a case that the addition is subordinate relative to other projects, but also necessary. So the site, one project with a front-facing gable that we actually designed four years ago that we get frequently when these come up is 1813 Holly, which is pictured on the comm sheet three. comm sheet three on the, the right-hand side. That addition, front-facing gable, sits back, there's an existing garage behind. That project was deemed necessary for a one-and-a-half or two-story addition, not unlike what we're proposing here. From a dimension, you know, how much room in the site do you have to work behind the house? I would actually say, in this case, our garage is, is larger than, than that garage. We only have 17 feet next to the garage, between the garage and the side setbacks. So if you have to be 20 feet or even 10 feet off that garage, you're only working with seven feet or maybe nothing. So, we need to, we have a very compact area that we're trying to create space in, and so that's what we're, we're trying to present. The existing house, just some facts about it, is, is 15 feet nine tall. Our addition offset would be 19 feet nine. It's still very short relative to 28, 27-foot-tall one-and-a-half-story projects that are seen around. The existing house is very narrow, it's 24 feet three inches wide. So again, we're dealing with a very narrow sort of long house. The existing house is 1,440 square feet, about 1,100 historic, 300 existing side additions, which you can see on the three-dimensional views. There's existing side addition that, you know, is kind of over on the driveway side. We're adding 505 square feet, it's, we're not adding a huge square footage. Relative to that, if, if we look at the, the sheets, some of these just sort of trying to make a case for subordinate or necessary additions on the, the comm sheet one, on the top of the page is our project, in gray is existing, and white is new. You know, these are other, other example projects that all were deemed subordinate, you know, to the existing historic house. Gray, these were just clipped out of other staff reports. I mean, we, we follow closely projects and keep ourselves educated on, on what is approved and, and under what circumstances and conditions. The, if we look at side elevation on, on comm sheet two, we can see gray, again, are existing historic homes, and the white are subordinate additions. Ours is on the top of the page, the two below are, you know, ones that were approved. We are significantly smaller, you know, relative to the, you know, the figure field sort of diagram of, of what that is. So, just again, asking that the two-story nature of this be taken into consideration relative to other things that are, have been approved. Both of those, one was four feet taller than the shadow line, one's three foot two, you know, again, sort of taller additions. Considering view and view angle of additions, significant additions to homes do have visibility. We felt like, from the first initial meeting, we did have some on the east side of our addition. If you look at the sheet five of, the comm sheet five, we have street views that are in the staff report, and our presentation, you know, basically our model lined up to those same views. The view from the, the west elevation is one-and-a-half-story structure, which was reaction from having more of a, initially more of a two-story look there, and so we pulled it down to create the space and added dormers and things. The front elevation, you can't see it at all, and that's, that view is from, you know, standing in the middle of the street, or maybe the sidewalk across the, the street. Then the east elevation, we do have a taller wall there, but it's, it's buffered by an existing one-story addition. Probably in a better, in a better way than if you look at the sheet three that we're given as kind of good example is 1813 Holly, doesn't have a side addition to kind of buffer that two-story wall. So, that's sort of why we set the addition in there, to align with that. Again, we just really want to make the case that we be permitted to put a one-and-a-half or two-story addition behind this home, to work with staff within that shadow line offset to come up with a, a solution that, that can work. Sorry, one last thing. On the, the 10-foot setback, 10 feet from addition to garage is approved regularly. I mean, it was approved at 1813 Holly, it's approved in new construction, it may have been even in some of the ones we saw today. I know that that was mentioned as a, as a, as a comment against, but 10 feet's regularly applied. The clipping of the roof, we will do that if that's what it takes to get something approved. We feel like on this house has 30-inch Craftsman overhangs, big deep overhangs, that adding Dutch hip architecture to it just kind of muddies the, the water of what the architectural language is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing closed public hearing, discussion.
Just a general comment, as you all have probably heard in public, is the way we're discussing these adjacent homes to a contributing structure is how we are closely looking at it. So, I know the applicant has given examples of other two, but they're not adjacent to this building. So, again, context is where we will consider those building. I mean, that's our purview as well. And, and in, in saying that, in the design, and it doesn't contrast greatly with the surrounding contributing buildings. And the two-story is a bit higher than the original house, however, the house next to it is a little taller, so I'd like to hear the commission discuss on how that two-story impacts or reflects the contributing and also the other.
I think the best place to start is that when you're looking at infill, a whole new building, that's when you look at historic context. When you're looking at an addition, you're looking at its impact on that specific historic building. So that's where, why staff made the comments they did, because we're looking at the impact of that on that particular building, and we're also looking at how you've made decisions in the past.
Sure. Thank you, Robin.
I should have asked this question when I was given the opportunity to speak to staff, but I'll, I'll ask it anyways. Would this be, this is kind of a clarification question of, of staff, and I know you, you can only comment on what's drawn or what's presented. This would be what you might consider a camelback addition, and maybe part of the front too, but that is for everybody, the back end, and then maybe towards the midsection. It seems like a lot of, a lot of house on, on the back of this one. And maybe that's what this lot suffers from, is just not enough house to sustain, or to combat the, you know, the, the presented addition there. But there's a question in here, and it's this, is, as presented, this certainly does a more than adequate job of respecting the historic house, you know, in total, from all the way back to the, the, the back of the roof and the rear-facing gable. Is there a scenario, would it be better or worse if, if this house, if the hump sort of got on the front of the camel a little bit, and, and maybe didn't cover the lot? Would that be acceptable one? And it just seems like a whole lot of house on not a whole, not a lot of lot.
I think that is, I think that is exactly it. It's, it's a lot of addition to not a very large house. And, you know, the camelback type of addition is very common in places that have a lot of shotgun houses, like you see that a lot in New Orleans. It's not something we have really ever approved, a camelback type of addition. There are some in Germantown to older houses that was done, that were done before Germantown became a historic preservation zoning overlay, but we, I don't think we've approved any since it has become an overlay. It's, I, I mean, moving the hump forward towards the middle of the structure, I think, would be an equally, if not worse, more offensive impact on the historic building. And ultimately, you know, it's a front gabled bungalow that is difficult to make that a five-bedroom house, which is what they're, they're trying to do.
Agreed. I, I wanted, I, that was the answer I expected, I just wanted to make sure that that was the answer that was given.
Ben, can you explain what that means?
What a camelback is?
Yes. Specifically, like what makes it?
In districts, there is one I'm thinking of in particular, and I, my memory doesn't, isn't clear enough to know whether it was before or after the historic district was established, but I think there are neighborhoods in Tampa, and specifically in New Orleans, as the staff pointed out, where if you've got a shotgun house, you know, it's already sort of long and skinny, and to just keep running on out, the roof slope is sort of compressed, and you, you really take two stories, and then as efficiently as you can, you kind of hang it on the back of the house, and there you sort of get the hump or the camel's back, and that's why they call it a, just a euphemism, I guess, for, for what the architectural form that results. And, and it has been used in some historic districts, not a lot in Nashville, as a way to get, you know, a little, a little more house on, on, on an existing historic structure that's one story. I was maybe trying to describe what this is more than, than make a suggestion of the, how to bring it in compliance or anything else.
Yeah, I struggle with this one. Well, a little bit too. I, I feel like it might just be too much house for the lot as well. Although I, I do applaud all the effort that went into it to try to make it, but it just might just be, you know, you know, too much for what this lot can do. It's, at first I was thinking the same thing as you, if the hump got moved, maybe would help it, but maybe it's not, you know, it's like, because it's the same thing, it's just pushed up, so it probably is worse, probably like Sean said, because then it, you're, it's probably better that it's further back.
I think form-wise, it, it might, it would seem less a lot.
Yeah.
It would seem less i- if it were moved forward, but certainly that violates the tenants, some of the specific tenants in the guidelines is that the, that the house should kind of stand, the historic structure should be respected, so that if you sort of take off the addition, and that's what they presented, and, and I think dutifully so, they did what, what should be done, just the mass of it, the, the total mass of the, the existing home, and then the, and the, the two-story addition is just a lot of house to cram on that lot.
So, so if it was a one-story extended, how does that real, you know, how does that interpret?
You know, as I looked at this, it's, it's a difficult lot, but I really applaud the owners for investment in the neighborhood, for being committed to the neighborhood, I applaud the architect. This is one of the best sets of drawings, we have to be able to see what we're really talking about and really understand it, and, and that helps out a whole lot. But, but again, I, I do feel like it's just more house than that lot and that existing home can take. It, it is highly visible from the street, and so that's the other thing, it's not so far set back, or, you know, so vegetated, so it's pretty highly visible. You ask what a one-story addition would do, their architect will sort of have to look at that, but to me, that would take away most of the objections that I would have had to it. So, I, I think that's where the difficulty is, it's the, sort of the hump sort of starts coming up over the top of the camel that, that winds up being the part that feels, that makes us feel out of balance and out of scale.
You guys, any, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, with, with no other apparent comments, I'll go ahead and throw out a motion that with respect to 1507 Fatherland Street, that we agree with staff recommendations and move for disapproval.
Of a motion, do we have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next is 816 Shelby Avenue.
I have this case as well. This is 816 Shelby Avenue. It is an application for new construction of an infill and outbuilding. This is the lot here, it's currently vacant. The one with the blue arrow is what we're talking about, last month, or maybe two months ago. The commission approved infill on the other vacant lot immediately to the left of this one. But this is, so it's a combined site plan, but that's the one we're talking about today. The infill will be a single-family structure with a detached accessory dwelling unit outbuilding. The mass of the, the form of the building will be a two-story, similar to a historic four-square, 36 feet wide. I'll go to the floor plan, it's easier to read, 36 feet wide, 59 feet deep in total, including an eight-foot-deep front porch. Those are compatible with the proportions of historic buildings nearby, which often range from 28 to 38 feet wide. The front facade will be 33 feet tall in total from peak to grade, including a two-to-three-foot foundation as grade falls away to the right. Also compatible historic context includes houses from 21 to 36 feet tall. There is a two-to-an-half-story house across the street that may even be taller, but the grade makes it difficult to, to know exactly. Bottom line, the, the height and width of this building and the depth are appropriate for the historic context. As I said, there is a eight-foot-deep front porch, full-width porch, and on top of that, on the second story is a semi-circular projecting bay, projecting three feet from the primary facade. Staff finds that the scale of that is reduced greatly from an original version, but still finds it to be too great in comparison to similar features on nearby historic buildings, and recommends that that be reduced by a third, to project no more than two feet from the primary facade. The setbacks, the roof form, the proportion and rhythm of windows are appropriate. The materials are brick and stucco asphalt shingle roof, those are also appropriate. Staff does ask to approve specific selections of things like window, brick sample, roof color. There is a two-story outbuilding that meets all the design guidelines, and staff recommends approval of the proposed infill and detached accessory dwelling unit, with the conditions that the finished floor level is consistent with nearby historic buildings, that the depth of the round projecting second-story bay shall be reduced to two feet, that brick color siding, texture and reveal, roof color, and all the window and door selections are approved by historic zoning staff prior to construction, that a front walkway is added connecting the front porch to the sidewalk, and that any permanent landscape features, this being a preservation overlay, permanent landscape features including walkways, driveways, fences and retaining walls, HVAC location are all approved prior to construction. With those conditions met, staff finds that the proposed infill and outbuilding meet the design guidelines for new construction in the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Thanks, Sean. Any questions for Sean?
Sean, this one, it's a little technical, but it's related to the front projecting bay. bay. If we sort of scooched that in, the, I guess it's what, nine inches? Is that, is it 2.9 feet?
That may actually be an inside framing dimension. I, yeah, I mean, one line on a scale is, so, I measured three.
The architect can speak to this, but I'm sort of looking, that form, the roof form completes itself at the apex up at the top, which is probably, I mean, it's pretty critical to read in that thing, and you could say that's good or bad depending on, but if, the further that goes back into the house, that resolution of how the front, that's a pretty significant thing. And I didn't know if it, in the analysis, you felt like it needed to maybe not apex or be more into the house, or seems to be a pretty critical.
It was a bit of a, I mean, I don't know that I would call it an awkward juncture, where it's actually conical, not just, you know, it has a peak on it. But certainly there are turrets on historic forms that have a, you know, a fully round, you know, that type of feature.
Sure.
You know, it could be a flashing issue, but it didn't seem like a design issue. But I'm sure the architect will tell you that.
As we push it in, it seems like we go from it being one thing, which sort of has a peak, to maybe coming close to being something different and more integral to the roof. Depending on how, you know, how it's, the size of it and so forth. I don't disagree with the analysis on the depth. That would be sort of the next part of the discussion, I guess, would be how that roof resolves itself up top, given it's a prominent element.
The pitch is maybe a little off, but very similar. So as that goes, if that were to go back into the building, I'm not sure.
Not for you to decide. I just, I didn't know if you had an opinion about having the points so that any or, any or outie connected or, all right, thanks.
Maybe Mitch can add to it. Would the applicant like to come forward and state the case and further the conversation?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mitch Hodge. I'm the architect for this house. As you remember, or some of you might recall, we were here in July with this design we started out. It was something certainly more bolder, the bay projected out about eight feet. And then we've gone through many meetings with Sean and have kind of worked on things to get it, you know, to get it within the guidelines. So I'll just focus on the base, since we're good on everything, everything else. We had it, again, we had it at eight feet, and then understood that was, that was too deep. So we added the front porch element there that was not present before to kind of, to basically bury that bay in there, so it doesn't feel like such a projection that gives it more of a base on there. And again, through a series of meetings with Sean, you know, we kept manipulating it. We took it down to three feet. I thought we were good there. And then, kind of late in the game, we recommended taking it to two feet. I've looked at that, and what happens, because the way that bay comes out, we're working with a certain module of window on that radius, is that we lose two of the windows, and the whole effect of that is just lost. I actually did it, showed it two feet, and just, it's, what was the point? It, you know, it just watered it down so much, the whole effect, it was gone. It's a pretty basic four-square, frankly. We feel like that bay gives it some, some character. If we could look at the plan, the whole intent of that from day one, when Steve purchased the lot, was have a nice sitting-up room up there that would engage with Shelby. Shelby Avenue would give a nice panoramic view where you could kind of see some downtown. So we want to keep that in there. Again, once we, it doesn't sound like much, taking it back a foot, but when I actually did it in the model, we lost two of the windows, because again, the width, significant, at that dimension, the width significantly gets reduced when you take back the depth of the foot. So again, I would ask that we could keep that in there. We've tried, but, thank you. Any questions? Well, it kind of, it just fades back to where it's just barely even. It's like, what's the point of doing that? Yeah, yeah. Nice try. Yeah. Yeah. So, and again, we, I have the original one. I know the eight-foot was, opinion was, it was pretty harsh, so we've taken it back five feet from what it was originally, and we feel like it fits within that porch, that porch roof. We have it within that. We've got the eaves lined up nicely, just to simplify that. But felt that that was about the breaking point, where once we pull it back any further, any further, the whole effect gets lost, and it's kind of a moot point. It becomes just more of a simple four-square.
Okay. Did you want to, to anything? Just also state your name and address.
By the way, he's lost like 15 pounds, and nobody said anything yet, so. I'm Steve Bird. I know I've met in front of this commission now several times, and I appreciate the opportunity. I see a few new people here as well. I want to thank Sean, because Sean has been a pleasure to work with, and he looks good. The tie looks good as well. And I know I've been dealing with you probably since May, so we've met so many times, at what's for dinner tonight? As far as the bay, that is really the only condition I'm asking for. I'm fine with everything that Sean recommended. That bay is sort of an important element to me for primarily one reason. You might remember the first time I did present to you, I was originally building two homes, one for my parents, and then one for me that was going to be next door. I don't think my mother's going to make it to the 818, which is why I made that an investment property. But if she does make it, she's now down to a wheelchair. And that three feet versus two feet makes a big difference for pulling out a wheelchair. So that's the main reason why I'd like to keep that bay as it is. If that could be an accommodation by this commission, I'd really appreciate it. My father just wants to use the room to make old fashions in Manhattan, so he's 82. So that's what you do when you're 82. To Mitch's point, we did start with an eight-foot bay, reduce that to four and a half, and then reduce it again to three. So we have come down quite a bit. I did actually take some pictures of some other properties in Edgefield. This one actually appears to be a three-foot bay. That's what the neighbors, the people that live there told me, that this is three feet. They've hidden it very well, though. So it does have the dormer, which we removed. This one's more of a circular one. I love this home. This one's only about two feet, though. But that's because they've rectangle it. They made the wide window here to rectangle it. This one's obviously a very large, prominent, round element with its own separate roof. I love this home, but you've got, it's pretty busy there in front, with the dormer and with the separate roof on the left, two entrances and the balcony on it. This one I absolutely love. They have a bay on the left, and obviously a very strong central element. But this bay does project about four feet. This is one that just has a walkout balcony on it above a round, large element. And then one of my favorites is Carol's home. I love Carol's home. So this is right across from Ben Sistrunk, who's our project manager, and I love that. But that's obviously a very large bay with a very large roof element there. So I live currently at 321 South 11, so I'm in Lachlan Springs, where the people that just were. And I bought these properties in December of 2016. So this is coming up on 15 months that I've been working on this. And I really hope that the commission could see their way to approving it. I know there's the condition to try to shrink that bay. I'm hoping you can give me that three feet versus two feet. I don't believe there's a regulation that prohibits a three-foot bay. So from my perspective, it is somewhat of a subjective issue for you to deliberate. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project?
Could have said, I thought one thing, but.
Well, okay, no, I want to, you can use your rebuttal, but can we make it with 30 seconds?
He'd asked about the 2.9 feet. That was from the face of the brick to the outside face, not the framing. Yeah.
Oh, okay. That was it. Thank you. All right. Closed public hearing. Discussion? Looks like we're mostly talking about the bay, if we want to be specific.
I'll be specific about the bay. I think, I'll put in an argument for, as, you know, some of the examples, East Nashville has some specific residences that are more grand in terms of the architectural flourish of a particular element. So I don't find this to, might contrast greatly with what's next door, but as an element, it has a bay, it's appropriate, I think, for the neighborhood. And for a large four-square, it doesn't, it will be unique, but I don't think it screams uniqueness in that regard. And so just on the surface of being a bay and a rounded bay, I think it fits. I'll make an argument for as presented, and here's a reason why, on a, segmenting a circle when you construct it, there's a certain width to those windows, and if you segment, if you have less segments, it's not going to look round, and I think it's not going to look as presented, and might have the unintended consequence of being even more noticeable and perhaps more awkward than it is as presented. And so I think for the spacing and sort of the rhythm of the openings, I would make an argument that this is not, doesn't lean, in my mind, to the side of being out of character with the district. And I think for the solution, I would hate to tinker with what those proportions look like, mainly because it is that rounded element. That's fine.
What if you craft that in a motion, and let's see how it rolls?
Sure.
We'll get it later through our.
I move approval of the application at 816 Shelby, as recommended by staff, with the exception of the second bulleted comment that as presented it and dimensioned on the application, is in keeping with the guidelines.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 1411 Forest Avenue.
1411 Forest Avenue is currently a purple, non-contributing house, and it's proposed for demolition to be replaced by a new single-family structure. Demolition of the non-contributing building is appropriate under the Lachlan Springs Design Guidelines. And that's just a shot immediately across the street. This neighborhood and this street are made up of a lot of one- and one-and-a-half-story Victorian-era houses, full Victorian, and some craftsmen bungalows, also one, one-and-a-half stories. The new building will be 30 feet, it'll be one-and-a-half-story, similar, with a form similar to a craftsman bungalow, which, as I just said, is compatible with some of the historic context. The new house will be 30 feet wide with front and side setbacks that are consistent with the surrounding context. The one-and-a-half-story house will be 27 feet 6 inches tall, including roughly three-foot foundation and, or two-foot foundation, one-foot porch floor thickness. The roof form, the proportion and rhythm of windows are compatible. Materials are cement fiber siding, asphalt shingle roof, split face block foundation. Those are all compatible. But staff would ask to approve specific selections of windows and doors and inherent colors prior to construction. There's the rear elevation, floor plans. Staff recommends approval of the application to demolish a non-contributing building at 1411 Forest Avenue and construct a new house with the following conditions, that the exterior materials shall be administratively approved, and that the HVAC location and other appurtenances are administratively approved. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that this project meets the design guidelines for the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay. Any questions for Sean? Okay. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here. He may want to speak. He's been very patient to say this whole time, and he actually sent in his drawings just after the last deadline, so he really has waited a long time.
Okay. Applicant would come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Joe Spicer. My address is, I live in Goodlessville, and it's 2043 Crincore Drive. As Sean, I do appreciate Sean working with me on this project. I purchased this property unaware of the obstacles that confronted me. So with his guidance, we came out with a great design, I feel like, and I'm hoping for approval so I can get started on the project.
Thank you very much. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'm looking to approve the, not staff recommendation for 1411 Forest.
Second. I have a motion, a second, and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 913 Gilmore Avenue.
This is an application for infill and an outbuilding on this currently vacant lot. Staff approved demolition of the non-contributing building on the site in September of last year. The proposed new residence meets space setback requirements centered on the lot with side setbacks of six feet and 54 feet from the rear. The front setback is in line with the adjacent homes. Staff recommends including a front walkway to the street to meet the design guidelines for orientation. The structure is one-and-a-half stories with two-story elements viewed from the sides. The ridge height is 31 feet 6 inches from grade. Staff's review is that this meets the historic context. Where contributing houses are one-and-a-half stories and range in height from 19 feet to 33 feet. It will be 38 feet wide, also in the range of historic context with widths from 26 to 40 feet. The proposed materials have been approved previously and also meet the design guidelines for materials, with the condition of staff approval of windows, doors, and some other materials that were not indicated. There is a small, one-story outbuilding proposed, which also meets the setback requirements and design guidelines for outbuildings. To sum up, staff recommends approval of the application with the conditions that the finished floor height is consistent with those of adjacent contributing buildings to be verified by staff, that a front walkway is added to connect the house to the street, that staff has approval of masonry, windows, doors, garage doors, trim, porch materials, the walkway, driveway, and roof color, and that the HVAC and other utilities are located for minimal visibility. With those conditions, the project meets the design guidelines for new construction in the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here as well.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Any questions for Paul?
Just quick, what, can you explain on A 2.2? I don't know if I'm just not, the windows at the top, what am I looking? It's like the two windows in the, or one of the architects in the room? Am I just, am I looking at two different surfaces? Oh, no, sorry, the side, the A 2.2, oh, sorry, 2.2. The spacing of the windows at the top? So I mean, there's a, what is that line signifying, that vertical line?
Sort of apex of the ridge coming together.
Okay. But I mean, those are just on the same surface next to each other?
Just the way, the way the plan lays out, I mean, I think historically, you sort of take those windows and slide them over and center them, center them in the, in the gable, you might hope, but I don't know that we.
Okay. I was just, I thought I was looking at it wrong.
What you have to decide when you design is whether it links much from the outside to the inside.
Yeah.
Since they're better than the area, it's one of them each side of it. And so from the inside, it's much bigger, not from the outside.
Graphic like that line kind of messes you up.
Well, yeah, it's like, I'm looking at two different planes. I couldn't really tell.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay, all right, thanks Paul. Would the applicant like to come forward and comment on your case? Please state your name and address.
Hello, Brian Schaefer, 1105 Glenwood Avenue. Fine with all the recommendations that staff has made. And I was going to reference your question, and it is the layout of the bedroom. And there's a wall between where those two windows are. So that's the reason why it's offset like that.
All right, any questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing unclosed public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to 913 Gilmore Avenue, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 514 Monroe Street.
Okay. 514 Monroe is a vacant lot located within the National Register of Historic Places Development Zone of the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The application is to construct a duplex infill and an outbuilding on the vacant lot. So here's a site plan showing the footprint of the house, primarily the front setback. They are lining up the front setback of the house with the house next door to the left, which is 518. There'll be six inches forward of the front wall of the historic house at 512. Staff found that the proposed front setback does meet the historic context. Here's a more detailed site plan. The lot is 50 foot wide and the house will be 33 feet wide at the front. Staff finds that the width at the front to meet the design guidelines, after a depth of approximately 38 feet, the house wide is on both sides to be a total of 37 feet wide. Staff finds that this to be appropriate because the extra width is pushed back significantly from the front of the house. The house will have a depth of approximately 96 feet. Although this does seem deep, there are several nearby houses that are just about as deep, if not deeper than this one. Here's the front facade. Although the infill will be a duplex, its front facade is designed to make it appear as a single-family home. There will be one doorway behind a stoop facing Monroe Street. The proposed infill will be two stories with a maximum height of 34 feet 5 inches from grade. In the immediate vicinity, there is a mixture of one and two-story structures. And the design guidelines allow for infill to be as tall as 35 feet. So Germantown is a little bit different in terms of height than the other conservation overlays and even historic overlays. And the design guidelines for Germantown allow infill for single-family houses and duplexes to be 35 feet tall, whether or not they're next to one-story houses. So unlike other discussions you've had earlier today, the two-story house next to a one-story house, staff does find to be appropriate for those reasons. Let's see. Staff does recommend that the gutter system not run down the front facade in the middle of it, just so that it, because it visually dissects the, the house into two parts, which we found to be not appropriate. Here are the side facades, along with the elevations for the one-story garages. The front entrance is not a true front entrance. So this entrance that we saw here is not a true front entrance into the home. The main entries to the properties will be on the sides, kind of pushed back from the front of the house, connected by a walkway. The primary entrances will be 29 feet back from the front facade. The entrances on the side will have the appearance of secondary or side entrances, even though they're used interior-wise as a primary entrance. Side yard patios on either side of the structure will bring the residents to the side entrances. While the staff finds this to be appropriate, staff recommends that the roof covering over the side patio only cover the entrance, not the entire patio. This will help ensure that the perceived orientation of the house remains towards Monroe Street and that the, you know, it's not unusual to see a side overhang, but to kind of see one covering the whole porch is not something you typically see historically. So here is a rendering of what the new infill will look like in the streetscape along Monroe Street. And here are some photos. So the house on the top left is actually not a historic house. I think it was built about 2000 or 2001. It is two stories. The two, the houses on the top right are historic and are immediately adjacent. Then there's the kind of continuation of the street down Monroe. And here are some structures across the street. It's the former Mad Platter Restaurant, the Fish Market, and another historic house kind of across Monroe. And seventh, sixth, what is it, six, six or seven? Somehow I lost my recommendation slide. So, sorry, I don't have the text for my recommendation. So staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: one, that the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses; two, that the roof overhangs, patio coverings on the side facade only cover the entrances; three, staff approve all windows and doors; staff approve a brick sample, stone sample; the material design of the front stoop railing; let's see, the material of all the walkways and driveways; the metal roof color, dimensions and textures; the roof shingle color, dimension and textures; the walkway, the location of the HVAC unit; that the middle gutter on the front facade be removed; staff approve all material, materials and designs of the fencing; and staff approve all appurtenances, including but not limited to lighting, walkways, gutters, gates, et cetera. So basically, we're recommending approval with the two design changes being shortening the overhangs on the side and removing that gutter. Everything else is our standard conditions for final material approval. And the applicant is here? If you have questions for him?
Just a real, just a quick one, Melissa. So the sidewalks to their side, there's going to be sidewalks to their side entrances?
Yes.
Right, so you all are okay by not having that focused center of the design?
They're called patio areas. Let me see if I can go back to see what the material is.
I mean, I guess because we were always conscious about how the facade looks and how it enters from the front, you know, so this is an unusual entrance, so.
Right, yeah, it is, it is an unusual entrance. But staff found just that the, it still looked like a single-family entrance, even if the primary entryways are going to be, how people are going to use them are from the side. I mean, I don't think it's so unusual to have sidewalkways kind of to the side yards or to the rear of the house. So staff found it to be appropriate. Okay.
And for the roof part of that, what, can you go back to that slide?
Oh sure.
To see what your?
So yeah, so basically.
You just want it on the red portion?
Exactly.
And remove, so over the doorway?
Just over the doorway, yeah, because that'll make it appear more like a side entry.
Okay, any more questions from Melissa? All right, thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address? Or make it as brief as you want to?
Yes, sir, very brief. My name is Lucas Chestnut. I'm part of the partnership that owns this property on Monroe Street. I live in Kentucky. It's 1745 Gary Lane, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. We, we evaluated the neighborhood and drove and walked every block to try to find a design that met concepts that we saw in older brick buildings. So the core of our design began there. We handed it to our architect, Chris Goldback with Preston Shade Design, who did a great job working with Melissa, and we just wanted to thank them. We can't take the credit, but we were very excited to be able to build this. So it is a unique entrance, and we are going to work, we're waiting on our stormwater analysis to find a way to keep the stormwater under and all sorts of things to meet the stormwater regulations. And then we'll work with them on how to do the patio or sidewalks that still meet the stormwater regulations. So that's going to be a joint effort to make that work. But we're just very excited to do it. This is the first time we've had this process, and I think between her and my architect, it went really well. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing unclosed public hearing. Discussion, motion?
I'll just add, there's a house on Fourth that was a double lot, where there was a side addition and a similar sort of false entry to the bedroom that was front-facing to the street. You know, was presented and approved. And I think it works, it works really well. And in this case, certainly having an entrance that addresses the street, although it won't be the primary entrance is, it appears to the pedestrian walking by that it's proper, if you will.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to 514 Monroe Street, I move for approval for staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we had two projects that had come off consent. And the first that we'll listen to is 2805 27th Avenue South.
I'm sorry, which one did you say it's?
That's okay. I picked the top one, which was 2805 27th Avenue South. Is that okay?
It's a slide, 27th. 2805 27th Avenue South is a circa 1940s brick bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. In July 2017, MHCC staff issued an administrative permit to demolish a side bay which extended over the property line. In November 2017, MHCC reviewed and approved a design for an addition with an attached garage on the site. So this may look familiar to you because you looked at a previous proposal in November 2017. This is a new design. Staff felt that it had changed enough that it needed to go back to the commission for reconsideration. So here is the site plan. The addition meets all base zoning setbacks, and it will be inset appropriately. On the left elevation after the inset, the addition extends 11 feet 6 inches wider than the historic house. The design guidelines allow for additions to be wider when the historic house is less than 30 feet wide and is shifted on the lot. In this case, it meets both those standards. It's about 28 feet wide, and it is shifted on the lot. So it's about five feet from the one property line and 11 feet from the other property line. The wider part of the addition is no taller than the historic house and is pushed back to over 70 feet from the front wall and 20 feet from the back corner of the house. Staff finds that the wider portion to be appropriate and to meet the design guidelines. The addition's depth will be approximately 47 feet. It will approximately double the footprint of the house, which staff finds to be appropriate. So here is the front facade. The historic house is one-story in height, and the addition will be no taller than the house. It will be one-story, but because of the slope of the lot, there is a raised basement. The infill includes an attached garage where the addition is wider than the historic house. The design guidelines state that attached carriages can be appropriate when they are located at the basement level and when they are located in areas where an outbuilding would have been historically. In this case, the garage is located at the basement level. Since this lot lacks an alley, historically, an outbuilding would have had a garage doors facing the street and would have been located to the side of the historic house or could have been located to the side of the historic house. In fact, on this lot, you can see from the metro map, there is an existing garage which staff has, I think issued a demolition permit for already. But there's an existing garage kind of shifted to the side where the new attached garage is proposed to be. So staff found that the location with the front garage's doors facing the street is where a garage would have been historically. Here is the right side facade. The addition's foundation height will match that of the historic house. The addition ties into the historic house a little bit lower, and its eve height matches the historic house's eve height for a period before going up about 1 foot 6 inches taller. The ridge height of the addition, however, will be no taller than the ridge height of the historic house. And here is the left elevation. The proposed materials match those of the historic house, and all of the known materials are appropriate with staff's final approval of material choices. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the project with the condition that we approve the final details, dimensions, and materials of the windows and doors, a brick sample, a stone sample, the roof shingle color, the material design of the rear deck railing, and that the HVAC unit be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house. With these conditions, staff finds that project meets Section 2B of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, thanks Melissa. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and present your case? State your name and address.
Manuel Zeitlin, architect. Thanks for staying so late, so we can be heard. Just usually I even just say what they said. But I just want to make a comment that if you remember the hearing, a couple of the neighbors came, and one of the neighbors was so upset she couldn't even speak, that lives, you know, near these houses. And so afterwards, Berkeley asked if, Councilmember Allen, asked if we meet with the neighbors. So we met with the neighbors on site, and I walked around their yards with them and talked about what their concerns, you know, views, feeling like they're being overlooked. You know, just, and just, so we made some changes to the plan as while we're back with this, just to try to accommodate their concerns as much as we could. And then this is sort of setting up the model for the next house. It'll be the infill house that's next to their property. So we wanted to just make sure this worked and was a way to fit something in a little bit more compact and a little less imposing. So thank you.
Any questions for? Did you have a question, Ann?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding the project? No? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion. We had gotten it all consent. Is it, did the person leave already, or?
I'm not sure that they came at all.
Okay.
It was requested prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to 2805 27th Avenue South, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion, second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next one is 20, also that was pulled from consent, was 2519 Blair Boulevard.
Okay. And like the earlier project, this is really Melissa Sajin's project. So I might have to defer to her for some questions, but she has lost her voice. So I will be her voice. So 2519 Blair Boulevard is a request to construct a rear addition to 2519, oh, sorry, read that wrong. So this is a request to construct a rear addition. The house was built circa 1931 and contributes to the character of the Hillsborough West End neighborhood. The request also includes a side setback determinations and alterations to the historic house that are considered partial demolition. There we go, there we go. That's where that slide went. So the proposed addition is located to the rear of the house and is inset appropriately. A right-side setback determination has been requested for the right side to reduce the setback from five feet to four feet. Although the addition is no wider than the house, the right property line is at an angle. Staff finds that the right-side setback determination is appropriate as the addition will be no closer to the property line than the existing house. The proposed addition adds approximately 1,500 square feet, which neither more than doubles the footprint nor the depth of the existing house. The addition is located at the rear and extends two feet taller than the historic house. Here is the right side elevation. So that's, it might be, look like a ridge raise there, but it's not a ridge raise. It's actually the addition is going two feet taller further back. The additional height is located 45 feet from the back from the front of the house, which meets the requirements that the additional height be located at least 40 feet behind the front wall. Staff finds the additional height to be appropriate since it is no more than two feet taller and meets the distance requirement for additional height. Since the primary roof form is a side gable, a ridge raise could be possible for this location. The proposed design, however, provides an alternate to the ridge raise, which not only maintains the existing ridge line of the historic house, but is much less visible from the street. Here is the left side elevation. The addition will complement the historic house with windows that are compatible with the style, rhythm, and proportion of the existing windows while incorporating modern elements such as fiber cement panel siding and a flat roof form with crickets at the rear of the addition. The addition will be distinguished from the original by stepping in from the sidewalls before continuing back, before continuing back and by the change of materials. Here's the rear facade, which includes a single-story screen porch with a rooftop deck. The request before you today also includes alterations to the historic house that are considered partial demolition. There are three changes that are proposed. The first is to replace the existing center metal column on the front with a new column to match the other two existing porch posts. Staff finds that this is appropriate as metal porch posts were not typically used during this period of construction, and this is not likely original to the house. The house currently includes two dwelling units with one unit accessed via exterior stairs to the second level. The applicant proposes to remove the exterior stairs and the second-level door on the left side facade. According to the 1931 Sandboro map, this house was not originally a duplex. So the exterior stairs and second-level door are not original to the house. Therefore, staff finds removing these elements to be appropriate. The applicant proposes to relocate the second unit entrance to a proposed side door on the right side facade. To accommodate the proposed side door, the applicant proposes to convert an existing window opening to a door and to install new metal overhang and walkway access to the entrance. Staff finds that changing the window opening to a door on the right side facade could be appropriate since the location and width of the proposed door opening are similar to that, to those of the existing window. The commission has permitted roof The commission has permitted roof overhangs that do not include posts to the ground since this type of alteration is removable. Furthermore, a setback determination is not needed for the side stairs or the roof overhang as the zoning code permits these setback intrusions. So technically, the little stairwell, the overhang are over that five-foot setback line, but base zoning says that those are allowed intrusion, so that does not need a setback determination. All right. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the addition, setback determination, and partial demolition at twenty-five nineteen Blair Boulevard with the following conditions. Staff approve the final details, dimensions, and materials of the windows, doors, masonry, walkway material, roof color, trim, front porch post, porch floors, porch steps, and porch railings prior to purchase and installation, and the HVAC unit be located on the rear facade or on a side facade beyond the midpoint of the house. And with these conditions, staff finds that the proposed project meets the design guidelines. And the applicant is here.
Okay. Any question for Melissa, staff?
Yeah, a quick one. It appears the head, you know, the proposal is to take a window and make it a door and that window width may or may not be as wide, maybe it's as wide as the window is, but it looks like where it's sort of, the head is jumping down. Would it be more or less appropriate? Is the staff concerned about maintaining that consistent head height from the existing windows? I think it'd be a, you'd have a, above the door, you'd do a little awning or whatever, not an awning, but a transom. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Or is that not deemed?
I mean, I think staff didn't consider that. I mean, it's something that if the commissioners wanted to ask the applicant to, you know, raise up somehow with a transom window or taller door, I think staff would be okay with that. But we didn't have an issue with it as is.
Okay. Okay. Anyone questions? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward again and state your name and address?
Manuel Zeitlin, architect, five one six Hagen Street. Thanks staff for all their help and support. However, this is another one that Councilmember Allen has intervened on behalf of the neighborhood and we have some changes we wanted to really put in as conditions for approval, actually. So we submitted this kind of near the end of the period for submittals and by the time we got notices out to the neighbors, it didn't allow much time or didn't allow time to really get any revisions in for the commission. So we wanted to, in trying to work out, work out something that would be much less impactful on the neighbors, we wanted to put in a few conditions. The first would be we're no longer asking for the reduction in the side setback. We're not adding the side porch. We're going to keep the existing or repair or do something similar to the existing exterior stair. And then we're going to reduce the size, the footprint of the rear addition to no more than five hundred square feet, where I think now it's shown about a thousand or more. And that way, it'll greatly reduce the impact on the neighbors. And then we discussed, had some discussion with the staff with the idea that once this is approved, then we can work within the approval as long as we're within the, you know, following the guidelines to be able to work at staff level to work out of the changes to the design.
Manuel, is it because the neighbor, Manuel?
Sure.
It's in the air. It's a long day. So you're making the change on that porch because the neighbor was thinking it was closed, close to there.
It was the porch, but also, you know, it's a pretty sizable addition. You know, we worked with, tried to manipulate the massing and everything to minimize the impact of the addition, but it's still a big addition. And I think just relooking at the, at the house and how it can be used, that it'll be much better if it's a much smaller footprint added on to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Manuel? All right.
I just want to clarify something. Sorry. Those changes are not, are not what is before you right now today. You don't have those drawings. So even though those changes are coming, I think they still want to ask you for approval of this, what you see today.
But with those conditions?
Well, but those aren't conditions that we've reviewed. You know, changing the size of the addition is dramatic and we'd need.
Well, I think the neighbors want to be sure that like this house will be sold or approved like it is and were sold to somebody else, that they don't build this full-size addition. They want to, you know, so the idea of having a condition that limits it to five hundred square feet is something that they would be comfortable with and we're comfortable.
With the proper thing, we'd need them to defer and come back to a smaller.
Well, the reason that we don't defer is that the buyer has involved the house yet, so he wants to know that he can do something, you know, before closing on the sale and he's, he's already extended the sale with the seller a couple of times, so he doesn't want to go back to the seller. So we're, you know, we're trying to just find a way to, to help the neighbors feel comfortable, but also be able to know that, that they can do something. But I know you put, I mean, that seems like a normal condition that you can reduce the square footage of something that's proposed.
It's a little more complicated than that, though, because it's such a different design.
And I'm fine with, I mean, I'm sorry. We're fine with, you know, coming, you know, coming, if you want us to come back to the commission to bring a new design rather than doing that at staff level, that certainly could be a condition.
Yeah, that's not the issue. The issue is all they can vote on is what they have before them today.
Okay.
So they either need to approve what they have before them today or not, or defer. But the deferral is up to you.
Okay. So then if that's the case, then I would like to, okay, then I would like to, I guess, say that the conditions, we still can, we still can remove the condition for the five foot, for the reduction of the setback, because we can just shift the rear addition a little bit pretty easily to not have to, have to impede on the setback because there's a lot of, a lot of room on the other side. And then this, then I guess we would go with it as it is designed today because everything else does meet the guidelines.
Would you mind holding your thought? Let me just get the public hearing out the way real quick, if you guys don't mind. And then that way we can just kind of hear any comments and then we can talk about it. Did, open public, did you want to speak first or, oh, Berkeley, you can do.
We can do whichever one you want to.
Yeah. You can speak, depending on.
Thank you again. I'm just moving in. Berkeley Allen, Councilmember for District eighteen. Again, this was one where we started to have some neighborhood comments and we're moving toward what seemed like a good resolution, but not in time to get information to y'all to be reviewed so that, so that that could be included in what you vote on today, which is a shame, because I think we had a good discussion back here. I think we appreciate the efforts that Manuel has gone to to come up with a solution that makes the neighbor more comfortable. I think she is comfortable with the solution. She's nervous with not having it formalized and included in the vote. So I don't, I don't know if that is an option. I had suggested deferral. I understand, I understand how closings work. Seems like sometimes they, they get all that and then they sit and wait for months and months after we hurried up anyway, but I won't, I digress. So I would, I would say if there is any way y'all can give, I mean, I can vouch for the character of the architect and his, his past record in keeping his word, if that's good enough to make our neighbor feel comfortable. I would love to see things have a good resolution today. I do feel like it's important that we, we make the neighbors comfortable knowing that what has been proposed, the smaller footprint, is what is actually going to be built and that there's no way to sidestep around that. So I'm hoping y'all can come up with a creative way around the dilemma that we find ourselves in. Again, I will say I appreciate the conversation that we've had. I think we all agree in what has been proposed by the architect but has not been placed in front of you. It is smaller in every dimension than what you see. If, if it's possible to approve something less than what you've, what you've seen in front of you, that would, that would get us where we need to be. If it's not, put your thinking caps on. Thank you.
Did you want to speak?
Sure.
Just state, come forward, I mean, state your name and address.
Sure. I'm Ann Zuber. It feels good to stand up. Thank you for staying so late. And I live at twenty-five twenty-one, right next door there. I moved there in nineteen ninety-four and so that's why I raised my family there. So if it's the current plan, then I am asking you to disapprove that current plan. I mean, we had a wonderful discussion and came to an agreement and so I would really like you to approve with the conditions that Mr. Zeitlin proposed. If you can find a way to do that, please do that. If not, then I'm going to ask you to disapprove the plan. And I can talk a little bit about that, why. You know, it's, it's basically a one and a half story home that is not a duplex, really. It's a single-family dwelling with a five hundred square foot apartment on top. And the proposal is to take that eighteen hundred square feet and bump it out into two side-by-sides massive duplexes. There is nothing anywhere in the surrounding area of that scale, not in any direction. This would be the first big property to go down. And so it's kind of in your power to stop that happening in, on Blair in this kind of way. And, you know, so I am opposed to the scale. The addition comes within four feet of the property. I mean, I'm just saying all these things as the existing plan. The new side entry shifts the whole house to the right side of the property. That porch comes within one foot ten inches of the property line right there. The open porch has a metal railing and metal awning and it's very visible from the street. All of those things contribute to deteriorating the historic character of the home and the street and the neighborhood. So, and it seems like what's really driving this is a closing date. And that seems not a good reason to drive something like this when we need to be thoughtful about design, especially in this neighborhood. And man, sitting here, I really appreciate the research, the care, and the thoughtfulness that goes into your decisions. And so I'm asking, if it's the original design, let's take a pause. I mean, I'm a classroom teacher and I know sometimes things get crazy and it's really important to pause, to look around and reflect and think, what's happening right here? Is this what we want to have happen? Let's look at a design that's more sensitive historically to the neighborhood.
Okay, let's, that's two minutes. Let us figure out a way. Thank you. Let's see if we can.
Okay. One more comment. I just want to say that sometimes, and I know you know this, but in my preparing, the design of a house affects the use and how neighbors use their space and how they relate together and how the neighborhood coexists, and I'd like you to consider that, too.
Thank you very much. Okay, closed public hearing. Before we go forward, so in the spirit of working together on it, is it, could we make a, what condition, two condition? You know, the condition about removing the stair and reducing it five, reducing it to square footage, as I said, and then that they have to bring it back to you to approve that administratively?
I have two concerns. One is you will be approving an addition without having any idea what it looks like. It isn't as simple as just changing the square footage. Just a quick glance at what they sent, it's very, 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 very different and staff did have some concerns, but we have not had time to fully review. And I so, so appreciative of the applicant for all that he's done to make the neighborhood happy, but if you're going to accept new drawings, then you have to suspend your rules, which say that you don't do that, or you're approving something without knowing what you're approving. And that makes me a little nervous and puts a little bit of pressure on staff to maybe allow for something that we may not think is all that appropriate that you never got a chance to see.
And I would, open up to the mission, I would be okay with trusting staff on it, but, but I'd be, you know, maybe I'm too lucy to goosey, but I'd feel like, just in the spirit of all the work that they have done, but, but please, you guys, if you guys don't feel comfortable with staff making that approval, then we'll, we'll judge it just by what we've looked at here, but.
Well, and, and, I mean, you know, I mean, we've worked with the staff long enough to know that they make good decisions, but I also don't want to put that responsibility and the liability on them. But, I mean, we sit here and we try to redesign and rework and, and we just, we're just not capable, I mean, we're not, that's not our charge. But I do think we need to stick with what we're charged to do and we've got something in front of us, as much as I appreciate every, and the intent, but we also have to make sure that we're consistent in our decisions and so that we have an application in front of us.
And the other thing is that the staff recommends approval of this proposed addition. So that's what's in front of us.
Well, we may not approve it, though.
I have a question for the applicant, if I may.
With this last case, so.
Yeah, Manuel is, if this were, this seems really large. Let me start with that. And so if there were another design that reflected more of a consensus, in this case, five hundred square feet isn't, it's not, I thought it might be as simple as sort of just cutting off some of the back and, and it is close to what's presented. Would that be an accurate characterization of the discussion that's happened or no?
Yeah, if you look at the, if you look at the, sort of the back third of the addition where the siding changes, it's almost cutting out that whole middle section and sliding that part back in. So we're really just adding one bedroom on the first floor and a screen porch and then two bedrooms above it.
I was thinking that this addition was just about that too big. So I was wondering if, if it might, you know, we don't exactly know what the rear elevation looks like, but maybe we know a little bit the way it would look like if some consensus were.
And to clarify the staff's concerns, the sketch we sent them to show them an alternate, because of the other, the twenty-seventh Avenue neighbors, I didn't show any windows on that side just because I had been hearing from neighbors that are concerned about people looking, looking over their, their yard. So again, but if you almost look at where that line is and you've got the two windows downspout and that kind of moves back in, that, that can certainly be much more similar to what it is. The other piece was that we were asking for a three and a half foot height of that ridge instead of a two foot and, and they responded they couldn't approve a two, you know, something above the two foot at staff level. And so we'd be fine limiting it to the two foot height. And so that, so that gets back to what you're saying. It's pretty much, it could be almost very similar, just cutting out that big middle section of it and sliding it in.
Okay. Thanks.
So, so what you will have is you'll lose the gabled section and you will have a soaring shed roof taller than the existing house. That, that's our concern is that it is not what you're seeing today.
I think I was picturing the other thing is that you were not cutting out the middle, but taking off the back. Okay. I'm just curious what it might look like in the future based on the consensus, not accepting new information other than just imagining what might happen. Okay.
So if I may, so I think, sort of see two things. One, we, we could, and again, we could somehow getting that approval of intent to where we even come back with, if the staff's not comfortable, you know, maybe the first option is to come back to the staff and then if they're not comfortable with the design, have them have us come back to the commission with the redesign. Might be the way to approach it. The other is if there's hesitancy to do that, then, then I'm asking you to go ahead and approve this with the, with the removal of the, of the five foot, reduction of the five foot side setback, since it did meet, the staff did determine it met the guidelines. But I'm fine trying to do something that's more of a, something that gives them comfort.
Although I felt like the form would work, I think the commission doesn't feel comfortable. So I think we just have to judge, go by what we're looking at right here unless someone else agrees with me and wants to say it. But I get the feeling that people mostly want to hear, don't want to leave that to staff.
Yeah, well, I'll go back to what we heard today on the research and I, you know, we had someone come in and say, I've researched all the decisions that you all have made and if we accept this, this will go in as a, as one of those reasons. But I mean.
Yeah, but still, it's, you know, it's different. But, but anyway, I think you guys want to hear it, so let's talk about if we approve it or not, or with, or we disapprove it, if that, unless.
You know, this is a public meeting and it is recorded and transcribed. And I think that clearly the staff recommendation was for approval of the prior design. We've heard today, community objection to that. We've heard intent by the applicant to accommodate that, that community objection and to work with them to solve that. The closing is an issue, but I don't know that that issue should drive our decision on this. And my sense is that, that since we're on record as having looked favorably upon this project, but also wanting to accommodate the neighborhood and councilwoman concerns that, that that's good evidence of intent that may actually help the owner when they decide whether to move forward with that closing or not.
Okay.
But, which means that we, we don't put a burden on the staff to approve something that we've sort of blanket approved.
So let's discuss it, if we're going to, if we're going to approve it or disapprove Are we going with, let's talk if we're going to staff, go with. Are we going with, let's talk if we're going to staff, go with staff?
I mean, as-is, a few things. I mean, you know, the, the partial demolition, like the stairwell, I mean, that, that's all fine, the new side door, you know, where the window used to be, I'm fine with that. The column in the center of the house, making it, you know, cement, or the same as the other two, I like that. Overall, I just think the addition's too large for the house. So just, you know, regardless of what they say they're going to do, you know, I just think it just overtakes that small house. So just, that's my overall thought about the plan.
Okay.
Well, but, but, I mean, at the same time, the staff has found that, that it does meet the guidelines within, within the area. I guess the most comfortable thing I would be, I mean, like you said, Cyril, it's public record and the buyer could hear the discussion and how we want to, is that I think the better way to do this would be for them to defer it. I don't, I'm not comfortable approving it the way it, the way it is.
Well, by the, the way we do it, though, they have to defer, and they, they're not going to.
I know that, but I'm, I'm giving you my opinion.
Okay. Okay. So this side?
Well, I'm comfortable approving it as-is, and then I just want to know what's the context. So if they, if we approve this and they decide that they want to come back with some additional plans, would, at that point, could staff look at it, or would we have to bring it back? But that would not impact the closing if we're able to show today that this is fine as-is, but if you want to change it, you have that option.
And it just depends on the design as to whether or not it comes back to you.
Right. That would solve the issue.
What's the percentage of the expansion compared to the original?
My calculation is based on the drawings, the existing is 1,860 square feet. The addition with the proposed total is 3,628.
So that's about 50% almost.
If, we got some, so Cyril, what do you think? What are your thoughts?
I mean, my, my concern about approving this is that then that gives license to the owner to go ahead and override, you know, the owner wasn't here to make any commitments or, you know, we've got an applicant, but, so, so that basically puts the neighborhood at risk for this original design that they don't find acceptable being built.
Do you feel it's acceptable, or do you don't feel it's acceptable? What are your thoughts about it? As far as, do you feel like it's acceptable or not acceptable, I guess, so we can, you know, if you were to, what are your thoughts, I guess, on it? Right now, you just said that, that you've, you know, if we approve it, then that's not what the neighborhood's, sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm just, I'm going to put everybody else on the spot, too.
Sure. I mean, we typically see, you know, houses getting significantly larger and changing in scope and nature, and we typically see single families, you know, this has been occupied by two families, even though it wasn't originally designed for that. So it's been a duplex. It would continue to be a duplex. I don't, I don't find the design inappropriate for the context that it's in and where it is. Would it be better if it was smaller? You know, without seeing what the other plan would look like, I can't say that. I, I agree with staff that I didn't find what was there objectionable, other than the staff recommendations that we've seen.
Eric?
I'm, I'm okay with staff recommendations.
Okay. You hear the last one, Ben?
I think procedurally, well, the staff recommendation is what it is. We have approved things that they've recommended for disapproval and vice versa. I think, given, given that there is general agreement, discounting the urgency with which to close on the, on the project, there's some consensus among the applicant and those that are in opposition that effort will be made to make this smaller. I, I think the only thing we can do, given that the staff's not comfortable with our approving something we hadn't seen, is irrespective of the staff's recommendation, if, if we don't want it to move forward and the applicant legally have the right to build exactly what's presented today. If that's viewed by us as not a prudent thing to do, then certainly we have to look into the guidelines and figure out why that is. That's, that's what I'll say. And I think, you know, the size of the new building and its mass in relation to the open space, you know, the scale of it is, is, is large, and it does contrast significantly with adjacent buildings, and I think that alone would be a reason. Is it as large as some other things? Maybe not. But in this case, I think that would be a reason for disapproval.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Do I have a, are you deferring? Okay. So the, I don't think we have to vote on a deferral, right? Okay. So the applicant has decided to defer 2519 Blair. Thank you very much, commissioners. Is there any other business?
Yes, I just wanted to remind you, the Preservation Awards is coming up, and the deadline is March 9. So if you know of any great projects, encourage people to apply, or anyone who's listening knows of great projects, please apply by March 9.
What are the Preservation Awards?
They, thank you very much. They're an annual award program that, the Metro Historical Commission, your sister organization, sister board conducts, and they are a great way to just really honor people who've done a great job, whether it's infill or additions, commercial, residential jobs, not necessarily just in historic overlays, it could be anywhere in the city. And the mayor hands out the awards, so it's kind of a big deal.
Thank you very much. No other business. I call it adjourned. Mr. Chair?